Thank you for being here and this is the regular city council meeting Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, six-thirty, just after six-thirty P M. And we're gonna call this meeting to order. As a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a, complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. Mister Donahue, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Yao?
Here.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Present.
Councilmember Tesari?
Here.
Mayor ProTemplot?
Here.
Mayor Rigby?
Here.
And we will have tonight's invocation by Jim. I don't see him here this evening. Jim Willoughby is not here. Well. We'll do the pledge allegiance, see if he shows up, so we'll, um. Councilmember Tesari, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir? Well, that thirty seconds didn't buy us enough time. I'll go ahead and offer it. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so very grateful for this day that we have to gather together and to discuss the city's needs and to make decisions on behalf of our residents. Father, we ask that thou will bless us, that we may be able to be led and guided by thy spirit to be able to make those decisions. We are so very grateful for this great city that we have to live in, for the, the staff that we have to help to run our city as, as smooth as it is and for the, the great success that we have here. We are grateful for the opportunity we have as residents to live in such a great city and for the blessing that that is. Father, we are truly grateful for our first responders, for our, our sheriff's department and for our fire department also. We ask that thou will bless them as they are out serving and protecting us and keeping us safe, that they may be protected, that they may be watched over, that they may be guided in, in all that they do, that they may make the decisions that will return them home safely to their families. We also ask a blessing to be upon those that are out fighting for our freedom in our armed forces, that are fighting to defend our freedom. We ask that thou will bless and protect them and protect their families. We ask a special blessing to be upon this meeting this evening, that we may be able to share and discuss those things and that we may make the, the best decisions that we can for the city. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen. Never realized that part of the mayor role is to, uh, offer prayer, but I'm, I'm, I feel honored to do so. That's two times, maybe we'll, we'll shift it over next time. Moving on to item number three, the council may, uh, the, I'm sorry, this is additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mister Donahue, his staff or any member of the public requested to pull any items?
No, Mayor.
Or to add or revise any items, I'm sorry.
No, Mayor.
Counsel, is there anything that you'd like to add or revise?
Mayor, I, I would like to hit pause for just one second because we have a special announcement.
Okay.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mayor ProTemplot. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you guys. It wasn't so Saturday, but I, thank you, I, I appreciate it. So, thank you guys.
Thank you guys all for, for singing along, appreciate it.
I didn't expect it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, it's very thoughtful. Thank you, happy birthday, Brandon.
Oh, thank you.
His daughter Penelope called us to remind us, so.
All right, uh, if there isn't any additions or revisions from council, then yes, councilmember Yao?
To pull item of off the consent calendar, do we do it later?
Item next, item, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Or, I'm sorry, not next time, but that'll be coming up. If there is nothing from council, then we will move on to item number four, presentations and announcements. Item number four point one is the introduction of community enhancement and safety officer, Johnny Turfer, Turfer? Turfer. And I would like to ask our city manager, Brian Jones, to make the introduction, please.
The city of Eastville would like to welcome our new community enhancement safety manager, Johnny Turfer. Uh, Southern California native, Johnny grew up spending time in Anaheim, Escondido, and Yucca Valley. He learned about the business management in a, in a family-owned retail services businesses, business which he eventually went on to own. Later, he took an interest in local government and found it to be fulfilling career path while working full-time as a code enforcement officer and running his business. Johnny completed a degree in public administration and then took a job as a management analyst. Johnny volunteers on various organizations, including the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, serving as the twenty-eighteen president and his chapter president of a club that raises money to help families of fallen law enforcement officers. Johnny enjoys public speaking, riding bicycles, hiking, engaging with the community, and most of the time, and most of all, time with his loved ones, including three adult daughters, his girlfriend Jamie and their son, their son Doug, uh, and her son Doug. Um, and I wanna welcome Johnny, uh, to, to the podium. Johnny will also be instrumental in helping elevate our, our community enhancement safety team and really bringing in, uh, to the community enhancement safety team, uh, emergency management cert training as he's a certified cert instructor, so we'll be able to hopefully offer cert trainings more regularly than we can do with just the county, uh, cert training. Um, and so, emergency management, the cert training, as well as, uh, incorporating the neighborhood watch program, so we have a comprehensive community enhancement and safety program. Um, so we're very excited to, to have his leadership. He also has great experience, and this is all off the cuff, uh, because I'm remembering his resume now, uh, that wasn't included in this, but, um, he also helped, uh, oversee the volunteers on the patrol, uh, in, in, uh, uh, one of his communities that he worked in. And so, uh, we're very much, as we saw at the neighborhood watch, uh, community meeting last night, looking forward to expanding that program and, uh, empowering and engaging some of our residents to help with our safety in our community. So, um, we're excited to see his comprehensive leadership being brought to our management team.
Mayor, city council? Thank you for having me, and I'm excited to work for the city and to, uh, move forward some of the goals that, that we've established. Uh, I'm excited to help make Eastville a more resilient city. That's something that, uh, I think is really important, and I'm looking forward to do, doing that. And then, just one correction, I do not look like someone who rides a bicycle, it was motorcycle. I don't want the questions later, well, when are you going to ride? No, it's motorcycle. Anyway, thank you, and I'm excited to be here.
Yeah, welcome, we're glad to have you, we're excited, so.
All right, thank you.
So, if we can, if we can get a picture with you before you, uh, go back, that's our, our tradition.
Oh, okay.
And while we're coming up there, what kind of motorcycle?
I have two, one's a Harley and one's a BMW. I have a bicycle too, but I, I obviously don't ride it enough.
Thank you.
And just so you know, our emergency management specialist already signed him up for a training this morning that he participated in for the big one, the earthquake. Um, and so he, he went to some training to make sure we're well-prepared for that in Eastville, so.
Moving on to item four point three, item four point three is recognition of contract planner Eric Norris. And Mike Cashewagi from Inner West, will, uh, will you please join myself in the council at the podium, please? So, obviously, this isn't Eric Norris, but Mike Cashewagi. Uh, on behalf of the city, we just wanted to say thank you to, if you can obviously relay this to Eric. Eric has been very instrumental in our city, um, he's been here a long time and he's done a lot and he's, he's helped the city get to where it is. And we truly appreciate all his service, all that he's done, and we wish him the best of luck in his, his next endeavor. So, thank you very much. We'll, uh, ask you, you have that certificate for him? Thank you. The council's complaining about having to walk back and forth, they don't realize I didn't get my steps in today, so I still gotta, uh. Item four point four is the Eastville Public Library update by branch manager Felicia Chen. Ms. Chen, will you please proceed with your update?
Good evening, your mayor and city council members. The library would like to announce a few upcoming programs. First, the library is trying to implement a new book club for adults. It will run the second Tuesday of every month from six-thirty to seven-thirty P M. The next upcoming book club will be on July ninth. It's not your traditional book club where one individual chooses a book and everybody's forced to read the same book. It's actually to the point where you would bring in your last-read item and general questions would be discussed, i.e. how you felt about the book, um, and what you liked or disliked about the book, and if you would recommend it to others. Every month, we will also be having different themes as well, ranging from adventure to mystery to true crime, et cetera. The purpose of this program is to try to get more adults through the door in reading, as well as to start a readers advisory, uh, list for the public. We hope that this will be a successful program for the library with many more programs to come. Second, as a reminder, our summer reading program, uh, is in full swing. For the first week alone, we had at least a total of a hundred and seven children sign up. To date thus far, we had a hundred and ninety-five children altogether sign up. Children's, teens, and adults can still sign up for the, uh, children's program. For every five books that children do read, um, for a total of sixteen books, then they can claim a food voucher or, or a toy. There is still plenty of time to sign up and claim more prizes. We hope you stop by and participate. This year, we are also having a few, um, events geared towards summer reading. Um, on June twenty-ninth, this Saturday, uh, my gym from Norco will be hosting an event for the little ones that include puppets, uh, building blocks, and a tumbling course at the end. Parents will need to sign a waiver provided by the company in order to participate. Um, this event is available for the first fifteen to twenty kids. Second, the magician Michael Reynard will be coming down July twelfth from four P M. to perform a magic act, and all ages are welcome to attend. We hope the public takes advantage of these programs and events. Were there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I actually skipped over item four point two, uh, we'll go back to four point two, it's recognition of student liaison Brian Medina. And Mister Medina is unable to attend, but just wanted to recognize him and we'll make sure that he gets his certificate. So, he's done a great job for us and we're, um, he's, he's moving on, he just graduated from high school and he did an excellent job and, um, we're, we're gonna miss him, but we know that every year we keep on, we get another outstanding student, so. We'll see who's gonna be, be the next one. And moving on to number five.
Speaking of next one.
Mister Roman is also not, was not able to attend, so, um, hopefully next meeting we'll be able to introduce him and, uh, he'll be able to give a presentation next, next meeting. Moving on to item six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments be made. We request comments be made on the agenda, be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage in dialogue with individuals, council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mister Donahue, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have two comment cards. The first one is from Jamie Martinez, and I'll also note that, uh, Jamie has time donated from Ronald Fernandez, so it'll be a total of six minutes.
All right, Mister Jaime, please.
Well, good evening, members of the, uh, steam city council, representatives from the sheriff's department, um, the fire department. Uh, my name is Jaime Martinez, and I'm a resident on Caxton Street, which is, for those of you that are unfamiliar with it, it's located on the northeast corner of Ammoner and Oakdale. I come before you today to protest an injustice which has fallen upon my neighborhood, my street, Caxton Street, and the arterial streets, Emmerdale, Longleaf Court, Oakdale, and Badminton Street. For the past several years, we, meaning my neighbors and I, have been dealing with the overflow parking on our streets from the Seraphina condos. Many of you may be asking, well, why is that such a big deal? The answer really is quite simple. The overflow parking has resulted in the following. Trash being left on our streets, overparked vehicles every single day, vehicle break-ins, numerous vehicle break-ins, suspicious vehicles in our neighborhood, suspicious subjects in our neighborhood on a nightly basis, our trash cans not being picked up on trash day because cars from the Seraphina condos are blocking our trash cans. This isn't something that just happened. My neighbors and I have been dealing with this issue for close to seven years, if not more. There is an incident that occurs in our streets one to two times a week, every single week. No other neighborhood in Eastville deals with such a problem that I know of. Being a police officer myself, we frequently tell community members, you are the eyes and ears of the community. You know better than anyone else in who and what is suspicious in your neighborhood. Well, folks, let me tell you, this couldn't be more true, but here's the problem we face in our neighborhood. How can we, as neighbors, tell which persons or vehicles are suspicious when every single day there are suspicious vehicles or persons in our neighborhood? As a community member, I don't know if a person or vehicle is a resident of a condo's parking their car at nighttime or it's a criminal casing our neighborhood to commit a crime. So, they're saying the eyes and ears of the community holds true in every other neighborhood, but fails in our neighborhood. There is a solution to this problem. In my hand, I hold a petition signed by about ninety percent of my neighbors on those respective streets. The petition is a request to have parking by permit only, or at very minimum, no overnight parking. Either of these solutions would drastically decrease the problems we are experiencing and would also significantly decrease Riverside Sheriff's Department's calls for service in our neighborhood. That's time our deputies could be spending focusing on other areas of our city. It's time our deputies could be using, conducting high-visibility patrols or proactive enforcement, as opposed to responding to report calls for service and overparked vehicles and suspicious subjects and vehicles. In addition to the parking by permit or no overnight parking, we also respectfully ask that our neighborhood, that neighborhood watch signs similar to this be posted in various areas of our neighborhood, because there currently are none. So, this would deter would-be criminals or those that are trying to deteriorate the fabric of our neighborhood. You know, I stand before you as an individual member of this community, but I come as a voice for the numerous families who are concerned, scared, and especially frustrated with the problems we are facing and we continue to face. I plead that you hear the voices of your constituents, your community, your community members, because they, because we deserve the right to live and be secure in our persons, our homes, and in our neighborhoods. I do understand that there are some changes already in the works to combat these issues, but I ask that you follow up very closely with these changes so they don't fall by the wayside, because we know that these things have a tendency to do so. I also pray that these issues find a resolution sooner than later. And I thank you to the city leaders and especially to the members of this community for affording me the opportunity to speak before you. God bless you.
Thank you, Jaime.
I gotta finish my cookie.
Do you want me to share?
I, I just wanted to highlight a, a few things i- if I could. Um, I, I may have met with Lieutenant Martin and myself, um, in May. And, uh, uh, we, we listened to a, a lot of these concerns and, and, uh, we then met with the Seraphina property manager, um, to, to listen to some of the challenges and, and identify some of the opportunities they had in their community. On six-six, we had a neighborhood watch meeting in which, um, Mayor ProTim Rigby, Mayor, or Mayor Rigby, Mayor ProTim Plot, and council member Clint Lorimer, whose district is this, Caxton is in, and Seraphina is in, um, Mayor Rigby's district. Um, the line is right there o- on, on the two, um, where we had that out, we were out there. I was present and our set team, our, uh, special enforcement team from Riverside Sheriff's Office was also present there to listen to the concerns. We had the board members from Seraphina there, from their HOA, as well as numerous neighbors that live on or around Caxton. We heard a lot of the challenges that were going on out there and the suspicious activity and the criminal activity. And even while we were out there, we had some of the neighbors that live on Caxton or around Caxton, potentially, uh, driving past our event at, at a rather high s- rate of speed. Uh, um, and, um, following up on that neighborhood watch meeting, it was about a hundred degrees, I think, that morning. It felt like it, but, um, Mayor Rigby and myself met with the Seraphina board, uh, and Lieutenant Martin. And, uh, that was on six-eleven, um, uh, so, um, and, uh, we, I collectively walked the area and observed what was out there at, I think it was like nine or ten o'clock in the morning, maybe eleven o'clock. And we identified some opportunities, what they've been doing and what they can do, and we encouraged them to, at their next board meeting, which was at, on six-seventeen, to come up with some solutions, rather than us identifying some solutions for them and creating a bigger program, um, or, or funding something that was bigger than, than the problem. And so, we asked them to come up with some solutions. They came back with us that they're going to allow an additional vehicle to be permitted to park within the community for a total of three vehicles outside of the two in the garage. That would be a great improvement. They will also allow work vehicles with company logos to be parked inside their community, which were, uh, originally prohibited. Uh, the garages, they're gonna be doing garage inspections to confirm two vehicles are parked in each garage, so that people are first parking in the garage before parking out on the street and not using their car, garages for storage, which is a requirement of their HOA. They also asked us to be patient with this permit process change, because legally, through their HOA, they need to give thirty days' notice to their, uh, tenants and, and owners of the property. Um, Seraphina also said that they will pay for their private security company, Russell Security, to patrol the below streets Monday through Sunday between the hours of ten P M. and six A M. The patrol visits will be varying times during this window. Officers will be in uniform and marked Russell Security vehicle, white with blue, white and blue vehicle, which will be bit, visible on the roads in the areas. This patrol will focus on suspicious behavior in the area. The security officers will immediately report all information to the sheriff's non-emergency line. Um, and then she also wanted me to let everybody know that Seraphina is due to slurry all their roadways and parking spaces within their center, uh, the, on July twenty-third through July twenty-sixth, so they will be inconvenienced for those few days. Um, but they are gonna be working with the adjacent neighborhood to let them know about that. Um, and then Seraphina will be providing monthly updates on the progress and the incremental changes that are gonna occur. And we, um, uh, have promised Jaime that we will make this a top priority, um, to restore the quality of life. This didn't happen overnight, and it's not gonna be fixed overnight, but we're gonna be working towards doing that. And so, we've already had our set team out there, um, uh, doing patrols in the evening and, and, and doing quality of life, uh, interaction with suspicious activity out there. They've already made arrests, uh, uh, and, and towed, uh, vehicles that weren't supposed to be on the street or in those n- n- neighborhoods, and so, we have already, um, seen some progress. Um, and we have more night patrols that are going in there with our, our, our Riverside Sheriff's Office. So, um, we're doing a number of things, and we'd like to try these things before we create a, a restricted parking permit process, uh, um, in, in this, that we have to, um, then have personnel enforcing in the middle of the night. And, and, um, so, we, we'd like to try to see if we can, and rather than address the symptoms, we can address the cause, and that's what we're working with Seraphina, to really understand the cause and the route of why people are parking outside their community. And some of it was their parking permit process and permit process within their community that was causing people to park outside their community, and as we understood that, we were able to address that. So, um, without belaboring it too much more, we're gonna share this on the neighborhood watch page, a Facebook page, uh, in the next day or so. Um, uh, and I'll work with, uh, the neighborhood watch admins to, to help accomplish that.
Thank you. Just, uh, uh, add to that real quick, and then, uh, Councilmember Plot has a comment. Um, just to let you know, Jaime, that when we met with Seraphina, the board, um, their management or their board members basically said, it's a long process, we're gonna get through it. And we put the pressure on them, telling them that we understand long processes, we're, we're a government agency, um, but they need to expedite it as fast as they can. So, they weren't gonna take it to their board that Monday during that board meeting, but because of the pressure that we put on them that day, saying, no, you have to, you have to do something immediately or else we'll be forced to do something. Um, so, that's something that's, that's really good, is to see them, and they understand the pressure now. Um, and we aren't gonna give up on that, we'll make sure that it continues forward, that we, we see results. If it's hopefully through what they're doing, if not, then we may need to look at other options. The other thing too is, is I know that as residents, we don't see and know everything that's going on, um, but we had a neighborhood watch meeting, your neighborhood watch meeting. I wanna say that next weekend, um, Lieutenant Martin already had things in the works of, of dealing with that area there. Um, I'm grateful that we're an action city, and I'm proud to say that we're an action city. When we see something, we take action. We had another neighborhood watch meeting shortly after yours, had a similar complaint regarding traffic. The next morning, I was out in the neighborhood and I saw the motor officer there. So, I mean, we are, once we hear and know about things, and this is good for all residents to know, once we know about things, and that's the key thing for us to know about it, we will take action. We will make sure that our, our deputies, our traffic, our set team, whatever it is, that they'll be out there. The last thing, um, uh, our city manager talked about that they're going to use their private security, and he just said, for the areas below, we were given a map, Seraphina sent us a map. They're basically gonna cover Oakdale outside of Seraphina, they're gonna cover Oakdale. Um, they're gonna cover Badminton, and they're gonna cover Caxton from Longleaf, that cul-de-sac, all the way over to Emmerdale. Um, so, they're gonna actually go outside. Once again, they're only gonna be eyes and ears though, so they won't be able to do anything outside of Seraphina. They will just be eyes and ears for the, the sheriff's department, so. We are seeing action, like Brian said. Um, unfortunately, it took a while for this to happen. It didn't happen overnight that it got this way, and unfortunately, it's not gonna happen overnight that we're gonna get rid of it, so. But we are committed to make sure that it changes. Councilmember Plot?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, I, I think just on that note, real quick, and then I have just another comment. Um, I think it's a good gesture by the Seraphina HOA to be able to do that. Most HOAs don't even go above and beyond outside their streets to use part of their cost to use their patrol. Uh, o- one comment, I, I, I've worked with HOAs for over ten years, and I actually helped redesign Seraphina's fire alarm systems there. And, um, you're dealing with a really enormous HOA, it's fifty-nine buildings, about five units per building, it's about three hundred homes that are roughly in there. And so, it's one thing for a board, and definitely, that's, you're absolutely right, Todd, it, it's, it's a very expeditious to even get on a board agenda and then get it approved, but it's one thing to change a rule and reg or a C C and R. It's the other thing to enforce it, so. It's the other thing to enforce it. So Brian, the one thing I do wanna mention, and and I love the steps you're taking to it, is I know Tiffany Petty, the the community manager there, she's very proactive, they have actually a very good community manager there. And uh but the one thing is is just dealing with these situations, coordinating management to homeowners or in some cases tenants, it is a huge undertaking. I even had a conversation with Jaime about that process. Um, it's not going to be easy for them to get that message across, to get people to park in their garage. It is not simple at all and and just just think of other issues related to fire alarm stuff and and inspections and things like that, where we have to get in the homes sometimes, the inspections. It is sometimes pulling hair to just get into the, so I I would recommend that you stay very close in communication, I mean, I know you plan on doing that, just stay very close communication with Tiffany with them and just keep being on them because they're going to have a lot of roadblocks to even try to implement such a thing and 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 doing that. So it's 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 enormous undertaking for that community to do that, and I'm glad they're doing it. But again, I think I think we're gonna see this drag, drag if we're not on top of them and they don't continue to enforce it. It's gonna, it's a very difficult challenge to to have that done. So, but it can be done, it's just we need to stay on top of that with them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you. Um, thank, thank you Jaime for coming out today. And uh also thank you for hosting the Neighborhood Watch meeting on the subject at your home. Um, it it was a good turnout. Uh, obviously, it is something that is important to the residents. It is, as you see, important to the council, state staff, our law enforcement team. Um, and some of the emails behind the scenes, that they are being proactive on this. Um, and it also, what was encouraging is we're we're starting to see it, but I I don't know if you knew this, but there were some members of that board uh for Seraphina at the uh Neighborhood Watch meeting, which was um very positive, I think, and is leading to the outcomes that we hope to achieve soon. So uh appreciate you coming out today and thank you for uh being active and engaged.
All right, uh, Mr. Donahue, do we have any other public comments?
Uh, next speaker is Keith White.
Mr. White, please.
Of course, that's not, that's a, whoops, that's a never watch committee meeting last night, which was good. Um, I found something out where I live in Swan Lake, I am not in part J C S D territory. I'm outside the territory, which makes me, where I have to pay more use for me since if I need to. Technically, if we're on the side of fifteen freeway, we're considered Eastville, because this is Eastville Gateway. So I don't see why would you guys incorporate it instead of seeing that you didn't add, they didn't, the raw district didn't add Swan Lake and to it. So we're outside the territory. Either you guys knew that or not. So maybe I should try to talk to them, see if we can try to become part of the territory, because we are on this side of freeway, you know? And I'm a resident and there's other people residents. I spoke to a few other people, they and they say, yeah, they would like to use it, but we're not part of it because we're not theirs, because it's on the other side of Hamner. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you for bringing that comment up. And this this goes back to the founding of the city and prior to that and um that there's a great deal of history behind it, uh how the county chose to split the baby. And um before the fifteen, thi- this came about as a result of uh before the fifteen freeway was a freeway. And um the, so it the the confusion of district boundaries or agency boundaries is a very real thing as y- you're bringing up. Um, and it's, there's no easy answer, unfortunately. Being able to um outside of Swan Lake, Swan Lake is, ha- has a very interesting history in itself here before pretty much anything else. Um, but they, more than this one lake area is not even part of the J C S D water uh side of things. They they, if you look at a map of the area, they're not part of the parks, they're not part of the water and sewer. Um, and that is something that maybe we could look at as we move forward. Um, but in terms of the access to the the park system, homes on the e- on the east side of Hamner are not, and they they are part of uh Herpa um area parks and recreation, the K A R P D, it's easier by its acronym. Um, and they're building a beautiful new uh community cer- center, just on the other side of the freeway off of Belgrade there. Um, that being said, uh those east of Hamner also pay less in taxes, uh property taxes. Um, it, so there are trade-offs. Uh, the, I have seen people that, I I bought my home in two thousand and four, I've seen people that bought around the same time over on the east side of Hamner and uh they they pay less in taxes if and I have a feeling it will be difficult to get all those individuals to agree to pay more taxes as opposed to a slightly higher fee to use the facilities. But um it is a bigger discussion, but I appreciate you bringing it up, because it's something that not a lot of people pay attention to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Donahue, do we have any additional comments?
No, Mayor.
Moving on to number, item number seven, consent calendar. All matters of the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Donahue, has staff requested to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, we're, staff is requesting to pull item six point, I'm se- sorry, seven point sixteen.
Seven point sixteen, okay. And then has any member of the public requested any items to be pulled?
No, Mayor.
Council, you wish to pull any items?
Just item seven point sixteen.
Okay. Then I, I'm looking for a motion for the balance?
I'll make a motion to the balance, seven point one to seven point fifteen.
We'll let you pick who the one that was second.
Councilmember Lorimer. It might be because he's closer to me.
All right, vote please.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, moving on to item seven point sixteen. If we can have a brief staff report on that, please?
Uh, yes, um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um uh, a number of uh state agencies are increasingly proposing new legislation and regulations, looking to eliminate energy choices and mandating solutions to fully electrify homes and businesses in the future. Uh, these mandates eliminate local control and customer choice. So in consideration of Eastville residents and businesses that would be affected by the bills enacted at the state legislature, staff is recommending that the city council adopt this resolution in support of balanced energy solutions such as renewable natural gas, in addition to zero emission energy sources, as well as maintaining local control of energy solutions. Um, that you also see at the dice, you have a modified resolution that was submitted by our energy provider, S T E, which is slightly different from the one that was proposed by Southern California uh Gas Company. Um, if you have any um questions, we also have Leah Peterson from SoCal Gas in attendance and Mark Cloud from S T E is also in attendance, if you have questions.
Is there any uh comments on this from the public at all?
No, Mayor.
Council, any questions, comments?
Mayor Rigby, I just also wanted to highlight, per your request, we reached out to the W C E, uh which is the Western Community Energy Group, uh which is a an alliance that was created by Western Riverside Council of Governments uh that is exploring creating uh our own e- e- energy uh company as well. And they did not have any i- i- issues on either uh of the proposed ch- or wi- with the proposed change uh from Southern California Edison.
I don't know if, especially since this was just brought up to us, I don't know if it would be good to continue this item and allow um the gas company to review. I'm not sure if they've had a chance to review this. Um, but I don't know if.
We we can, we can continue it to a a a a date certain uh Jo- July tenth, uh which is our next council meeting, and we can work with both Southern California uh Gas Company as well as Southern California Edison and and the W C E uh to review the resolution to make sure that it is in compliance with where we want to go a- as a company. We thought they were all working together, but apparently it it wasn't a a a collabora- collaborative effort. And we would like to make sure that our preferred energy provider of electricity has an opportunity to review this.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Uh, thank you, I appreciate it. I I have taken the time to review both uh both the resolution and also the the proposed amendments to the resolution presented. Um, while I appreciate the position of uh all of our energy providers, I also believe that uh we do need a fair and balanced approach uh in this state for our uh energy choices. And we we need to have all options on the table and I would like to make a motion to um support the resolution as presented.
Just for clarification, is that as presented or as changed?
No, as as presented, the one in our packet.
I'll second that. Mr. Donahue, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Actually, I'm sorry, before I vote, do we have any discussion? All right, vote please.
Councilmember Yao?
No.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
No.
Motion fails two to three.
Councilmember, sorry, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd I'd make a motion that we go ahead and table this until the next meeting and allow our uh different energy providers to have some input uh with staff and come up with a resolution that's acceptable to everyone.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Donahue, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to number I, uh, number eight, public hearings, and we have one public hearing item tonight. As a reminder, if you would like to speak on this item, please complete a blue speaker form and the clerk will call you up when the public comment portion has been opened. Ms. Gibson Williams, will you please proceed with item eight point one?
Absolutely, Mayor. Good evening. And also good evening to members of the audience as well. Tonight, counsel for your consideration is a request um for conditional use permit specifically for the sale of distilled spirits at the seven eleven store. The physical address, sixty-nine ninety-three Hamner Avenue. So we'll get started with the presentation. So the first slide is just showing you where the location is. I'm sure everybody is familiar with that. It's at the northwest corner of Hamner and Riverboat. It's located within a multi-tenant shopping center and the specific location of the seven eleven on the site is indicated by the red uh square. We've already talked about what it's for. Um, just a little bit of background, so that number of that you saw on the previous slide, the reason why it looks a little strange is because it was actually a C D P that was initiated by the county of Riverside many years ago. So now uh we have here a beer and wine sales approved back in two thousand and seven at the county. And then recently, uh application filed with the city of Eastville. And then going through the normal uh process, uh it was a review by the planning commission. And at the May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, planning commission meeting, uh there was a decision by the commission to deny that request to amend that initial initial C U P. So uh right now, there is a sale of beer and wine already occurring at the location. And so this is an amendment to add uh hard alcohol or distilled spirits, if you will, okay? So there were several reasons that the planning commission did bring up. Uh, there were members of the audience uh that participated, uh spoke in favor and against. But let me summarize them here for you. Uh, the poor maintenance of the center was brought up by our planning commission. I do want to um also let the council know that we did have some code enforcement uh issues at the site, so that was confirmed. Uh, however, those uh code enforcement issues as of today, we did check with code, community enhancement and safety uh to let you know that there are no open violations at the site today, uh but there were at the time. Uh, there were also concerns of increased crime, uh proximity to homes. We have some slides to show you just exactly how close it is. And then uh the New Day Church is located uh just outside that thousand mile uh radius, and then the schools are in close proximity as well. Thousand foot radius. What did I say, mile?
You were taking us to, you were taking us to Reno, Nevada.
If it's a thousand miles, then we should just, you know, close up shop tonight, because clearly that's not an issue. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so um so ultimately, to increase the potential for minors to come into contact with distilled spirit, that was a major concern that was brought up by our commission members. Uh, so just some pictures that were taken uh prior to the commission hearing of the seven eleven. You saw the aerial photo. Now you see uh, you know, what it looks like on a regular typical day. Uh, and then uh were mentioned by some of the planning commissioners, uh some of the upkeep, this is just a location of that trash enclosure. You can see the uh proximity to the residents there. Uh, the complaints were that they were overflowing with uh several uh uh types of trash, uh smell, uh debris, uh and they uncapped nature, and it also got over into their adjacent residential community. But since then, um the applicant has provided us with this receipt. And the point of showing this is that the applicant has taken the time to be sure that they've increased the number of dumpster uh retrieval of materials from the site. Um, instead of just happening on an occasional basis, it's been increased uh to a three to four yard dumpster up to six times per week. Um, and so they're making payments for that service. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention this evening. Um, also, we talked about uh the planning commission's concerns. So here we have the aerial, and as you can see, this is very close proximity. We have about twenty-seven point three feet, feet, not miles. Uh, that the seven eleven is to the nearest residence. So just to give you an idea of the proximity. And then the height of the wall was also concerned. So what you see in this picture is taken from the residential side. Um, you can see that from that side of the property, the the wall is about five feet, six inches. But on the other side of the property, this is taken on the inside um from the seven eleven site, and the site's just a little bit uh lower. So you can see the height of the wall is only three feet, eight inches. And so it's, the residents were uh making the complaint at the planning commission meeting that if you were at that location, you could literally just go over the wall. And uh there were people traversing back and forth between the two, and that was a cause for concern. So um also, New Day Christian Church did say that uh there was a proximity um issue and that they felt that uh it was too close. And uh we taken the liberty to indicate exactly how close or how far away in this case it is. So one thousand seven hundred thirteen feet away um from the seven eleven and the New Day Church, and that's a straight line as the crow flies. As is customary, anytime you have a request for um alcohol sales, uh new or an increase, uh in this case distilled spirits, we do take the liberty of contacting our police department to find out what uh type of activity has taken place at the location. So in this case, uh seven eleven had three alcohol-related service calls in twenty eighteen. Uh, there was a a question that was asked about what that was in relationship to other things. And so Ralphs uh had fewer than that, and that there hadn't been any alcohol-related thefts that have occurred. Uh, there was further clarification.
Clarification, Gina, Ralphs had fewer or they had fewer than Ralphs?
Uh, that they, that the seven eleven had fewer than Ralphs. So Ralphs actually had more. Uh, so that question came up about comparison. So thank you, sir, for that. Um. And then uh also wanted to go on to the next slide. So what we have here is just a a real quick um excuse me. Just a floor plan, um that's customary to submit, you know, when you submit something for a conditional use permit. Uh, but this is where the beer and wine cells are indicated in green, so main entrance indicated in red. Uh, where the beer and wine is located right now, and the cooler is towards the back of the store. And then there's a location of for a cabinet uh behind the register where they wanted to be able to keep distilled spirits. And so that's indicated in blue. And then at the next slide, we're actually the same slide, but a blow-up. This would be a a photograph of the cabinet, what's been stored there now versus what they would want to store there and what the size of it is. A very small area, only a couple of square feet in size, um where they would want to store the distilled spirits. So the planning division did condition the project as we would any requests for alcohol cells. That there's a minimum size restriction for beer and wine bottles. The miniature liquor bottles for sale had to be located behind the counter. There's advertising requirements and also that if the C U P could be bought back before the planning commission, if there was any non-compliance, and that's customary. That's by state law. If there are any violations to a conditional use permit, it can be revoked. So that's very very customary with state law. So at the planning commission meeting, we did have there were petitions that came before the planning commission. There were those that petitioned in favor of the project and there were also those that petitioned against the project. And so at the dais, you should have copies of these maps that are blown up to a full size so that you can get a sense of of where the complaints were lodged and where those properties were located. So what we've done is those that petitioned in favor are are done with a green triangle. Those that petitioned against are done with the red triangle. We have the location of the seven eleven and then also the one thousand foot radius location. And I did have a total count that I wanted to share with you this evening. So those that were those that were petitioning against it, there were forty eight addresses indicated with the red triangles and then fifty three addresses that were indicated with the green triangle. And then shortly, I would say about what, four o'clock or so today, there was another petition that was dropped off and you also have a copy of that at the dais. We obviously, we didn't get a chance to put that in the PowerPoint presentation, but the council has that. And it would be showing an additional five signatures that came in today. And that would be the one that's dated June twenty sixth twenty nineteen. So we've taken the liberty of showing those that were against and also in favor. There were a total of five. And where the seven eleven is located and then the radius as well. And also copies of the actual petitions are at the dais as well. Should you wish to review those? So. So our planning staff took the liberty of doing a little research at the planning commission's request of going over the different types of twenty one licenses in the county of Riverside. And this is what this request is before you this evening. So there are actually six seven eleven locations that have an active type twenty one license, but the nearest one one is to stay was in the city of Chino. So that's shown there on the chart. And then they've also taken the liberty of doing all the type twenty one licenses of the seven eleven locations in the whole county of San Bernardino. So there's five seven eleven locations that have type twenty one license. So tonight before the council is a request from the applicant to appeal the decision that happened at the planning commission. So we wanted to present all of the information that came from the planning commission, things that were discussed, copies of the petitions and copies of the maps so that the council would have the full benefit of that plus the agenda report to be able to weigh in on the decision. There is a recommendation by staff. We've prepared resolutions in both to either approve or deny the application. So it's it's not a where we're suggesting one way or the other because the applicant has appealed. So the council will want to weigh all the information and make a decision. But the resolutions for both the appeal for the approval and the denial are included in the agenda packet. And so I do see that the applicant is definitely in the audience this evening. And so I would say that this would conclude the agenda presentation at this time. And if you had any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And, you know, Mayor and council, you can proceed as you deem appropriate. And thank you for your attention this evening.
Mayor, I might just want to add that the planning commission is recorded and you can listen verbatim to what every planning commissioner said. And you all have that opportunity and the minutes from that meeting are summarized and provided in your packet. And so and we tried our best to summarize their comments of why they voted in favor or against in this PowerPoint presentation. So I just wanted to let you know that there are three options and you can also speak with the planning commissioners. And so there, but we try to do our best to relay why they chose to deny it.
Thank you for that and thank you for the presentation, very thorough presentation. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, Mayor, we have nine comment cards. The first one is from Winston Chow. And I'll note that he has time donated from Susan Wang, so it'll be a total of six minutes.
Before we start with that, we have nine comments, council. At a minimum of three minutes a comment, we're almost at thirty minutes with that. Do we want to keep it at three minutes or do we want to reduce that? That nine is that, that's not including donated time then?
Correct.
So it could possibly be close to an hour with public comments. We could reduce it to two minutes per person?
From my count, I think we have two that are donating time. So there's two six-minute ones.
What does the council wish?
I'd be okay with hearing out the residents that wish to speak. I realize that this can be an issue that is near and dear to individuals' hearts. That being said, if I may, when you are speaking, if you hear somebody that said something similar to what you're going to say, it could turn into a very long night. So if they say something that you were going to say, it's already been heard. So thank you.
Then we'll go ahead and leave it at the three minutes. And like Councilmember Lorimer said, if you do have something that someone has already said, if you can just say ditto the person and we'll make sure that we take note of that. So we'll move forward with.
Winston Chow.
Winston Chow, please.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Porten and the council members. My name is Winston Chow. We live in tract number three one three eight six, the same tract as where the seven eleven is located for more than twelve years. So I'm speaking for the neighborhood, not just the one thousand feet radius, but that block. So in the past month, as you already heard that after first commission public hearing, we went door to door in our neighborhood and asked how people feel about this particular seven eleven having a permit selling hard liquor. Now, this include the neighbors in the immediate adjacent streets of Edinburgh and Thornbury. And overwhelmingly, our neighbors support the denial issuing such permit. And so we have gathered about eighty signatures in the hope that the commission, now the city council, holding the position of denying issuance of this such permit. And I was looking at the planning commission minutes back in the days when it was still Corona Riverside County. This seven eleven was allowed to set up in this tract despite considerable opposition from the people of this community. Now that we have our own city, I'm encouraged that our voices can be heard. Signing the discovery, and by the way, the planning commission staff, I think, did an excellent job. So we cited the close proximity of the residences, donate the church, schools, and the shortest path and the safest passage for school kids on Riverboat Drive. And then comparing to other seven elevens and other hard liquor outlets in around Eastville. We agree with commission members' repeated decisions of denying seven eleven hard liquor license request. And we're also asking you today to deny the third attempt. And over the years, I've been around for quite a long time. And I still remember L's Corner and we were actually hoping in that empty lot now, in the future, there's going to be some kind of community center or children development type of structure. So we know that over the years, the city has improved dramatically. Within minutes, from almost anywhere within the city, we can find a variety of places to eat, see movies, exercise parks, gyms, and to shuffle big things and small things, including alcohol. All places and services are conveniently located already. And it almost seems greedy to want more convenience. And with three recorded public intoxication in twenty eighteen and the recent fire unrelated strong robbery incident in February at this seven eleven location, the residents in this neighborhood strongly recommend the council members holding previous decision in denying issuance of the hard liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment.
Carol Carbona?
Hello, my name is Carol Carbona. I have been an Eastvale resident since two thousand and four. I'm also a small business owner. I oppose giving the license to seven eleven to sell hard liquor. I believe you all have a copy of my speech from the planning commission. I read the staff report, page two, prior planning commission action for opposing, quote, this would be out of character with their neighborhood. Yes, I live behind seven eleven, but I don't care just about my neighborhood. I mentioned it three times at the planning commission meeting. I care about the city of Eastville. The owner of the seven eleven wants to sell hard liquor for the convenience. We all have, we have convenience all over the place. He also mentioned he is responsible and will not sell to minors. I believe this. However, customers buy liquor for minors. You are not going to follow them out of the store, right? We don't want to make it convenient for transients or easy in and out for the commuters to purchase hard liquor. The owner also expressed to the residents that opposed that he will get the wall built when this gets passed. We don't care about the wall. We don't want to pass. Who is going to monitor this small area of liquor? How will it be monitored? I'm sure there will be a future council meeting for an expansion if this is allowed. I urge everybody, I urge everyone to reread the mission statement and strategic plan for the city. The mission statement includes superior public safety. And the strategic plan has many references to crime prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, our next public comment, please.
Next speaker is Vino Saghar.
Mr. Vino, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Vino Saghar. I've been living in Eastville for almost eighteen years and been running the seven eleven for almost twelve years. My kids go to Eastville schools and I think that I am the real Eastville resident. Because I live here, I do my business here, my kids go to schools here, so everything is in Eastville. So now my, today's concern is about upgrading my liquor license. We've been selling beer and wine with full responsibility for all these years. All we are requesting is upgrading the license. That means adding liquor, that is like hard liquor to our assortment. That will be behind the counter under control of the salesperson. Whereas some people, like fellow residents, as they spoke right now about the minors and all that. So as everybody knows, that in California, the law is that you cannot sell under twenty one years of age. So that's what we are doing. We are selling to adults, those are only twenty one years or older, and we check their ID as well. There are several sting operations being done around the city and especially at seven eleven. And every time we were successful and we've been given a letter of appreciation by A P C department and by the police department that we are doing a good job. So the liquor is being sold in Ralphs, liquor is being sold in Smart and Final in the big aisles. I don't think so there is any problem about the liquor. The people who buy the liquor, they are responsible citizens. They take liquor to their home and they drink in their privacy. So if there is a concern of crime or anything that can be done anywhere that somebody can buy a liquor from outside, from any city and bring it to this city and do anything and drink on the streets. So another concern is I have like almost two hundred, more than two hundred signatures on my petition. More than two hundred signatures on petition, the residents who are in my favor and they were from all different districts, they are in full favor of me that I should sell add liquor to my seven eleven. There were like more than twenty six people who came to planning commission meeting and they spoke in my favor. There were like more than twenty emails they were at that time sent to the city. But all those were not looked at all because there were two residents who were totally against this liquor license because they said personally to me that they don't drink. That's why they don't want other people to drink. So today, Joe Segler, who is a resident who lives just behind my store, like about four or five houses away from my store, he sent an email to, I mean, he sent a letter and the email was forwarded to Melinda and she might have forwarded to you guys also. He said there were these couple residents who went door to door to get the petition signed against me and misled everybody and misrepresented, saying that there is a new liquor store coming to the town. We need to oppose that. And people did not read the petition, they just kept signing because they were misrepresenting it. So Joe Segler, I have his letter here. You guys can take the copies of that one. He clearly stated that these people came and got him and his wife signed on the petition because they misrepresented and he never knew that there is already beer and wine being sold and it's just an upgrade of the license. Same thing, there are other residents, I have other residents sitting here. They live on Thornbury. There are like twenty more signatures and applications I have here and they will speak right now. They just live five houses from my store. They are all in my favor. And they say that these people went there and misrepresented, saying that a new liquor store is coming to the town and we need to oppose that. So my request to the council is I may get denied or I may get approved. That is not the concern. The concern is there are two hundred other residents from different districts who really want me to sell liquor and they are with me. And there are two residents or four residents who personally don't like liquor and went door to door against me and misrepresented and got it signed. So it should be looked into because there were not like twenty people who came against me. There were twenty six people in the planning commission meeting who came in favor of me. And they all went disappointed because planning commission did not say not even a single word to those residents that why they are denying. They were totally decided and they just said no. Whereas the deny, how we can deny and they denied. And nobody liked that one. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vino.
Any, any questions, I will be here to answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just for the public's information too, there was no timer as he is the applicant. So just for the public's information on that. Thank you, Vino. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Sham Binla.
Good evening, everyone. I've been in Eastville since two thousand and five. I'm here to support a seven eleven to have a liquor license. They already have a beer license. My main concern is they want to sell it as protected. It's going to be behind the counter. But there's always cashier there. And it's, the second thing is, it's convenient. Whereas like a person like me, like a worker, I get off from work at night. I don't want to be standing at Albertson's or Ralph's like in a big line where I can just go to seven eleven, take my stuff and go home and enjoy. That's a couple things. That's why I'm supporting. I just want to share something I saw by myself. I was at the Ralph like two, three months ago. There's a, there was a big commotion going on when I was in the line. I'm like, what's going on? They said there was like five, six kids came in. They went to the, they went to the whiskey area, like open area. They grabbed like five, six bottles, came to the, to the register where there's no cashier, like a self-service. And then they just ran out. So. And then they just ran out, so. The reason I'm bringing that up is the seven eleven, they're gonna have it, have their liquor behind the counter protected. And it's gonna be convenient to the community, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mister Donahue, please.
Next speaker is Sanya Batla. She left?
Okay, we'll move on.
Uh then next speaker is Nanya Batla.
Hi, very good evening to all the council members. Uh I'm living in Eastville from last eleven years and we are right behind the seven eleven, we are on Thornbury Lane. And um I don't find in eleven years that there will be any issue by having beer and wine over there. And I don't think there will be any issue in future for having any kind of hard liquor over there. As their staff members, I always find they are responsible and they take care of all the mess around them too. And there is a, just because our city is really good, there's good security around the seven eleven too. And I go over there in at ten PM or twelve PM, I don't find any trouble while. Sell selling them uh beer and wine, so I don't think there'll be any trouble if they'll sell any hard liquor over there. If they are just adding convenience as it's a convenience store, so they are adding just uh another factor of convenience in their store. Just to add more popularity for among the all the consumers. And I'm in support of that, I don't think so there'll be any trouble by um allowing them having hard liquor over there, thank you.
Thank you. Mister Donahue.
Next speaker is Hyliss Shag Jagi.
Hello, everyone, um so I'm here to actually support uh seven eleven hundred percent. The reason why, because I'm living in um Eastville for last eight years. And I'm a permanent uh customer of seven eleven, now going over there, shopping over there. It's it's very comfort and the zone is very comfort for us, like if they keep the liquor over there, it helps. And like everyone is like supporting, I'm gonna be part of that also. Just wanna make it simple.
Thank you. Mister Donahue.
Uh final speaker is Bart Moreno.
Bart here. There he is.
Good evening, everybody, I'm happy to be here. A lot of good points are brought up on both sides and I completely respect um the points against approving this. Uh being a parent and a long-term resident of Eastville, I can understand him and respect him. Um but on the other side too, I mean as a city council, you're gonna have to make a vote here. And if you really look at who, what you're you're voting for and the person behind it. You know, the owner of of the seven eleven, besides, you know, being a resident of Eastville for so many years and being. Part of the community, if we're gonna take a chance on somebody, you know, and allow this extension of his liquor license. You know, this is the guy to take a chance on. He's, he's been a member of the community for so many years, he's run a business for so many years, I mean, he's been active. In so many different aspects of our community, I sit on a board with him on the Chamber of Commerce, so I I've seen him, you know, interact. And support the other businesses, so this is, this issue is not, not over, there'll be other businesses wanting liquor license. You know, in the future, so you're gonna be voting on this again, you know, sometime in the future, but maybe not. On somebody voting, you know, on the aspect if you know the applicant so well. If somebody is gonna do the right thing and make sure everything is done right, the community is protected. And he follows all the rules, this, this is the person that's that you can vote for. And you know, he is gonna do right by our community because he has so much at stake in our community. So basically, that's I'm, I'm here in support of him as a person and as a a big part of our community, thank you.
Thank you, Bart. If there is no further public comments, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And. Before we turn to council for discussion, I just want to share and put in on the record. These papers that I received. Similar to what council has in front of them is the petitions. But in addition, there is a letter from Crono Norco Unified School District signed by executives. Uh Chief of Staff, Executive Services Judy Now. Um recognizing a two thousand dollar donation from uh Planet Mars Incorporated. There is also a letter from Chino Valley Unified School District signed by James Nah, President of Board of Education, also recognizing a two thousand dollar. Donation. There is a um accommodation letter from. Department of Alcohol Beverage Control dated March. Uh nineteen of this year. That they had a successful um. There was a decoy that was done and they were successful through this. Also on in February of two thousand and nineteen, similar uh letter of accommodation from Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. Signed by law enforcement official Harrington. Um again, a successful uh. Completion of their their decoy, so just for. For your information and also just for uh the public's information and full transparency, I did or I didn't. Now I, my daughter's Girl Scout troop did receive a donation from uh. The owner and that was directed directly to the Girl Scouts organization, so it was no way. Um towards our family or anything, but that was directed towards my my daughter's Girl Scout troop, so just for full disclosure. At this time, we'll open it up for council discussion and. Councilmember Y'all.
I sh- I to- almost forgot about it until you mentioned this, I did receive a gift last year. Um right after my election, so I just wanna make sure, do I need to recuse myself or?
Uh no gifts that are reported on your Form seven hundred, that reporting um fulfills your your obligation, there's no duty to um to recuse. Unless you had a gift that exceeded the um the threshold for uh gifts, which for last year was. Four hundred and ninety dollars, I believe, it's currently five hundred.
No, it was definitely less than four hundred and ninety dollars.
Alright, we'll sta- we'll start with uh councilmembers, sorry.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Question for staff, um. Obviously, we have some development that's gonna be going on in that general area. Uh there's probably gonna be some uh ABC licenses that are requested. If this were to be approved, would that in any way affect uh or cause an oversaturation? Where we might get denied by ABC in the future?
Excellent question, um let me just say that um for. The council and the benefit of those that are in the audience that alcohol licenses are issued by census tract. So at this time, uh when I did call the ABC for uh another development across the street. Um we did not, she did not mention or we had any conversation about this tract being oversaturated. Uh for the types of licenses, although they are different, um the ones. At the other location are 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 um different license types, but they did not say anything about oversaturation, but excellent question.
We, we don't know if that uh is actually part of that census tract, the seven eleven and the Palopolis property.
So I uh the question was also asked by uh. By uh councilmember Pla- Plod as well and we do not have that census tract information at this time. I can indeed provide that and we will make that a part of our presentation from this day forth, anytime we consider any alcohol sales. Um but it's my understanding it hasn't been a part of the present pages in the past, but it will be from this day forth.
Part of your, uh I mean, based on your. Experience, have you seen a situation where based on the number of anticipated requests that they come out of that property? Let's say this does happen to be in the same census tract. Would you foresee, based on your experience, uh uh something that would cause that?
Yeah, if it.
A trigger?
Yeah, thanks for that, um so I can say that if it was uh an overconcentration. Then ABC would have contacted the city requiring us to take a, to take a stance and make a. An a determination one way or the other, so I don't think so, but I don't actually have the data to support it, so I have to go on uh. Like you say, past experience to answer that question, so we didn't receive any notifications from ABC, so I ventured to say no, but I I don't have the data.
Thank you very much.
If I could expand on that a little bit, from a a legal standpoint. Uh oversaturation um from ABC doesn't actually preclude the issuance of an additional. Um alcoholic beverage sale license, it just puts the burden on the city to make a finding of public convenience and necessity to support it. And if the city makes that determination, then ABC will go ahead and issue the the license.
But we haven't, we haven't received it, so I'm venturing to say that that tract is not oversaturated, but like I said, we don't have those actual numbers for you tonight.
Excellent, thank you. I do have a um, I'm kinda concerned about setting a precedent. I would anticipate uh other uh businesses of the same. Type coming and asking for upgrades in theirs. So I I just wanna express that, that that is a concern I have. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Y'all.
Actually, I have a question um regarding the presentation. So the three alcohol-related incidents, do we have more details regarding those incidents?
Yes, we do, I have some backup, so let me just get to the slide. Oh, that was it. So I have some additional information, so the three service calls uh where the police made contact. It was called, it was initiated by the alcohol store from the seven eleven store. So there, we have some additional info on past service calls, is that the type of information that you would like? Alright, so in twenty seventeen, there were three calls, um two for drunkenness and then one DUI. And in twenty sixteen, there were four calls, one for uh drunkenness and then three DUIs. And then in twenty fifteen, there were also a call and then one for drunkenness.
And did I hear it correctly that this was initiated by the owner?
That the applicant, right, so it says here the calls uh were where the police made contact. Doesn't necessarily mean that the alcohol-related incident was caused by alcohol sold from the seven eleven store. But I was informed from staff that the call was initiated from the store, so.
Thank you.
So in some cases where it, this could be the store owner calling in, somebody that's coming in drunk into their store trying to buy additional alcohol. That drove to the store and they're reporting a DUI and and then their response and that could be the case as well. So it's not always something that is initiated by the store.
Yeah, that's true, i- it could also been that someone, individual was drunk in the parking lot or drinking alcohol in their car while they're sitting in the parking lot, that type.
And I I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, if if we were to approve this. Are we still prohibiting sales between two AM and six AM?
That is listed as one of the conditions of approval, yes.
And uh and if again, if if we were to approve this and if there is. Um a violation or or something that happened there, can we, can we revisit this item?
Yes, there are two ways to do so, you can condition the project to come back before the council. Or uh you can direct it to go back before the planning commission for an update on how they've been doing. You can do it at a three-month interval, a six-month interval, an annual interval. Or um another option is if you can uh let the community if there are complaints and then. They would have to go through the other process of code enforcement or reporting it to City Hall, so you have two options and I've seen it done both ways.
If I can, just for clarification, so we can condition it to come back just for an update?
Yes, y- yes.
Just as part of a condition then?
Yes, Mayor, you can, it's uh because it's a conditional use permit, uh you can do that, sir.
Though, though I would suggest putting some sort of parameters to it, so it's not something that they're having to do in perpetuity. Coming back and reporting, no violations, no violations, so we would set some parameters to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you, um appreciate the presentation, uh the, one of the items, I think it might be the next slide or down a little bit more. Maybe one more where it showed the picture of what it would look like. You said it would be behind the counter, i- is there anything more to that? Uh what would the display area, what would it look like, what would entail?
Well, I can bring the, we can, if the council would allow, we can bring the applicant back up, but what we were informed is that it would be in a cabinet that's locked behind. Behind the counter, that's what we were told, uh we don't have pictures of that though, however, so.
Well, I, I asked that because I see that written in the staff report, it just was not articulated, um so thank you.
Councilmember Lorimer, if you don't mind, can we have the applicant just clarify that?
Hello again, uh so this is going to be a cabinet that is behind the counter. So it will have, it's like a logged cabinet. That will be logged at two AM at night and reopened at six in the morning. And it will have shelves and a door on the side or a sliding door that will lock it.
Thank you.
Um that that was. Let me see, one more thing. That's my questions for now, thank you.
Councilmember Plod.
You know, I may have you come back up too as well, I have a question for you. As far as the type of op- uh bottles, and I don't mean type of liquor, but I mean actual bottles. You put on selling seven hundred fifty milliliter bottles, you're selling, I don't know what the milliliters, but fifths would be a phrase that people are used. One, I kinda wanna know what kind of bottles are going in there, as far as the size of the bottles.
Size would be um, I mean, it will be seven hundred fifty ml. And most probably two hundred ml and there will be some of them for fifty ml as well. But all will be behind the counter.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, so a couple, I, I kind of some comments on what uh councilmember Tsari had mentioned. In regards to Palopolis and I, and I, I don't know if I fully understood correctly, but I think that the difference on what is happening at the Palopolis land when it comes to. When we are talking about distilled spirits is onsite consumption versus offsite consumption. Which that's what this is, so that's basically the difference would be going to a restaurant or maybe the hotel that's going in. Will have a bar there and so just kinda wanna clarify, at least how I understand it thus far. Again, we're talking about distilled spirits. Uh yeah, I, you know, I agree with, uh thank you for all the comments too, and it was very like to the point, quick, wasn't dragging, no one readily repeated each other, so. Thank you for, on both sides, I would greatly appreciate it to get the enough content to start kinda help formulate decisions. Uh I I know Vino personally, he he's a, he's a, he's a great guy and he's he's a great member of the Chamber of Commerce and has been a huge supporter of our city. We actually live relatively close to each other as well, he takes care of his yard, it's very nice, he's an awesome family. You know, with that being said, I I do think he would do a great job, uh but I I am concerned about. The loitering that potentially can go on and you talk about the the increase of transits that we're having in our state. This is just another, we're talking about convenience, but it's, there's also, we're creating more accessibility to incur that to happen. In those areas, which is, which is a concern for me. Um and it, the fact that it is close to the churches and or to the New Day Church. And to homes and schools is also another concern for me. Uh I'll continue, I would like to hear your comments too, Mister Mayor as well. Um but those for me are some of the concerns, is is setting the precedence for once you allow this, you will find that others will come. And you set that precedence to allow the use of um uh of liquor cell when it comes to offsite consumption, so. That's kinda my thoughts for now.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, uh. I read over the um and I shared just a minute ago, the decoy. Stings that were done and those were just for basically two thousand and nineteen, Lieutenant Martin, sorry to put you on the spot, but are you aware of any? Things that were done in previous years and has seven eleven um been successful through those or do you know of any violations?
I don't know of any violations, e- every time we have dealt with seven eleven, they've been responsible. For their, for their selves, so we have had, I'm unaware of any violations, ABC violations from them.
And when we update this permit. And when we update this permit, do we check that information with ABC at all? Do they provide any of that information if they've had any violations in the past? I, I guess Eugene.
Oh.
When we, when we are updating the permit, um, I don't know what our contacts like with ABC or what information they provide or.
Right, we would, we would contact ABC, uh, to find out if there had been, but then ABC wouldn't, um, entertain their pre-application if they're, if they were in violation of some sort. So, uh, but at this time, in this juncture and location, there weren't any issues with ABC, 'cause we did talk to ABC.
And maybe just to ask the applicant too, I mean, we don't have the information necessarily to back it up, but, uh, we can always verify, uh, if needed. You've been involved with that seven eleven for roughly twelve years. Have you had any ABC violations?
No ABC violations and plus, uh, last year I already applied for this upgrade. Uh, first of all, I had to get licensed from ABC, then come to the city. So ABC already has given me upgrade of the license and I'm just waiting for the CUP from the city. If I had violations in my previous years or at any other location, they will never give me the license.
Okay. Alright. And is this, I'm not familiar with the alcohol at seven eleven. Is this something that seven elevens do, this type of alcohol, or is this new to seven elevens business model, or is this something they've been doing or?
No, it's been in seven elevens, but not all of them. There are few seven elevens who does that. And, uh, l- l- let me add one more thing, like in two thousand seven, uh, when I was going to open the seven eleven, I already had the, uh, full, uh, liquor license type twenty-one I had at that time. But I downgraded it because the city was small at that time and it was not a, a city. It was unincorporated area. And it didn't, didn't want to have, uh, extra inventory. But if I don't sell liquor, then ABC want me to downgrade my license. So at that time, I downgraded my license. So after twelve years, now I'm thinking to upgrade it again.
Okay.
May, Mayor Rigby, here's the.
There, is that?
These are, these are the seven e- elevens that have locations with a type twenty-one license.
Okay.
In Riverside County. And then San Bernardino County has, so there are seven elevens in the inland empire that do have type twenty-one.
Okay. Great, thank you.
M- I might share that i- i- if the council is considering adopting this, you might consider just keeping this cabinet locked unless the customer requests it to be opened and then they can unlock it um, to take something out. That might be a condition that could help a- address any safety or theft or any concerns if that is an issue or a concern.
And I know that there is varying types of alcohol, ranges in pricing, all that, different, uh, different types. What kind of clientele, what kind of alcohol is this, is this gonna be kinda on the lower end, higher end, or?
It will be at the higher end because of Eastville people afford, so it will be at the higher end, of course. And plus, it will be a small cabinet where we will not have much room to expand, uh, the variety and all that. So it will be only the high end.
Okay. And the reason I ask that goes back to kinda Councilmember Plot's comment of, um, I think one of my main concerns is the loitering aspect that can happen. And I think if you have the lower end types of alcohol, then you get more of the potential loitering, um, potential transients. Uh, other, other issues that may come along with that also.
No, no lower end at all, because I live in Eastville, I love my city as well.
That's all the questions that I have. Thank you, Vino. Thank you for, for being here. Um.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mayor.
So I don't know if, we'll go around one more time, if anyone has any questions or comments. Uh, Councilmember Rial.
I, I know city of Chino is a little bit different from our city. Um, we're better, obviously, but, um.
Worse.
The, I, it, it says that on the slide that, um, one of the seven elevens at city of Chino has a type twenty-one license. Do we know how hard they doing, like, well, any incidents, any, any viol- nothing? Okay.
I did not, uh, we did not contact, uh, Chino Police Department to determine, uh, what level of activity. We can do that and provide that information. Um, we'll do that in the future, at some point.
Councilmember Tsari.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, if we did, if this were approved, what, and that precedent is set, if we were to deny the other seven eleven, if they came and asked for the same thing and we, and they were declined, would we put ourselves in, in any type of legal?
Um, I, I understand the perception that this could create precedent. However, from a legal standpoint, conditional use per, permit decisions are based on the specific evidence that's before you related to that permit. And so each, each decision essentially stands on its own based off of what evidence is in the record for that particular permit. And will be based off of the unique factors in each case. So in this case, with its proximity to the neighboring residences, you wouldn't always have that. Same thing with proximity to schools and churches, you wouldn't necessarily always have those same facts. So the precedential weight of this is actually fairly limited from a legal standpoint.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the thoughtful questions of, uh, the council and also the, everybody's input today and the staff's hard work on putting this together. Given the track record of, uh, the applicant, uh, in that the, the concerns about selling to minors, it, it is not founded, um, in their track record that we have uh, presented to us today. Looking to add to their alcohol license, something I'm gonna be in favor of. And, um, in fact, I'd like to make that motion to, uh, support the application for the enhancement of the uh, let me go to the top here, for the enhancement of the liquor license. Thank you.
Councilmember Plot.
I have a couple of quick things in the morning. Um. Is the, does this have to go through the landlord at all? Does the landlord give any input or it's?
So since the, uh, since the tenant, the applicant before you this evening is actually, uh, a t- a tenant in a multi-tenant shopping center, the property owner had to sign the application in order for it to be filed. So the signature, uh, means consent by the fact that they signed it and said it was okay to file, so.
Okay, so there's no issues with the landlord? Again, Lieutenant Martin, I apologize for putting you on the spot. Do you see any issues with the upgrading of this with any public safety issues?
No, it's like, they're, they're a responsible party every time we have dealt with them. Long as the cabinet's behind the counter and their employees are trained and they're checking IDs, uh, from a law enforcement standpoint, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. And going back to kind of Councilmember Lorimer's comment on, um, the alcohol to minors, I think you tend to see more minors go after beer rather than the hard liquor. My wife was at Ralph's not too long ago and you had some teenagers that ran in, ran out with beer. Um, I don't think that a lot of the, the teens are really after the hard alcohol is, as much as they are the beer. So I think if we had more issues of minors and beer there, then I think it would be a, a valid point to be concerned about minors and the hard alcohol also, but I don't see us having that. Um, just a couple of comments, recommendations that I would have. Um, I know there's a, a motion on the floor, but maybe if we can add to it or amend the motion. Um, I would like to see, uh, it conditioned for reporting back. Um, and I don't know, maybe if we, we discuss some sort of reporting back. Like our manager said, not in perpetuity, um, but something reasonable. So that we can have something, maybe it's throughout the first year, one or two times or, um, something that's.
Uh, we could start with perhaps, uh, six months, uh, come back in six months and then again, and if, you know, seeing those no violations, then then it can go through the regular route, which will be if there's anything, there, it gets reported to code and then, uh, makes its way up to the council for consideration. So you can do that if you wish.
Brian, did you have?
Yeah, it's e- six months a year. I mean, sometimes you have to let a, allow a track record. And so maybe if we bring this back, uh, uh, within the, the first year, um, and then after that, we determine, you know, it only comes back if, if there, uh, becomes a code enforcement, uh, uh, alcohol-related issue with the hard alcohol component. So if it's a beer and wine component, they already have that. But if it's hard alcohol related or something, then we can, um, bring that back.
I know sometimes it's pain, but I'd like to see it probably six months. Um, it just helps. I think the owner know that the pressure's on also to, to make sure that it's taken care of. Um, the other thing too is.
Would, would you like it to come back to City Council or just to go to Planning Commission?
I think Planning Commission would be sufficient. Makes our meeting shorter.
Okay.
Um, I, I'd be fine with that. The other, the other thing, I don't know if there's something that we can condition regarding Councilmember Plot's concern of the loitering aspect. I just don't wanna see, and I don't know if there's anything that we can do, Erica, legally, uh, any type of condition that we can do regarding that.
So loo- uh, loitering is addressed in state law, and so it could be enforced through compliance with state law. I don't think we need to do an additional condition. And my memory is serving me correctly, there, there have been some cases where, um, cities haven't tried to, cities have attempted to impose loitering conditions that were so restrictive. Um, they, courts actually struck them down. So we know we can do compliance with state law, so that's probably the best and safest course.
Okay. Councilmember Plot.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll be a little more vocal on this. I, again, I, I will say, I'm leaning toward I'm not in favor of this. But if, if I'm kinda, and I'm saying this more respectfully, that I'm being outnumbered by my colleagues respectfully. I would suggest that if we're looking at this, consider the two AM cells, if that is the case. That is, there's, there, you don't need to be selling it beyond twelve AM. That, that's, that's absurd. You, if, if that's the case and that is the direction, that if it does go to be approved, then, you know, I'm saying that I'm not in favor of that. But if that's being looked at, you, I think you need to consider the times at which it should be sold, which right now the conditions that are being presented before us allows it from two AM to six AM is when there's no cell. Uh, that two AM should be adjusted farther. I, I don't think there's nothing good that happens in offsite consumption at that time. Just my, my personal preference on that.
I'd be in favor of that, moving it to what, midnight?
Yeah.
I do have a, a question on, on that, um, as part of discussion. My, the current alcohol license as stands is, where, where is it? It goes until what time?
They, they, the, for beer and wine, they can sell it until two AM and then, and then it's not until six. You can initiate something that's different for hard alcohol and they can close the cabinet at midnight if that is the desire of the council. So the, the, uh, the hard alcohol can have a different timeframe than the beer and wine, if you so choose. It doesn't have to be the same.
Okay.
To be clear too, that is not my compromise for our vote, but if I'm, am being outnumbered in it, then I would like to see that we had that discussion. Just wanna make for clarification.
One of the other things is, is I would like to, I like, uh, what our, um, city manager, Brian Jones, had to say about keeping the cabinet locked unless there's a purchase. I think that would be something, uh, to add to a condition. The other thing is just a, a last comment on this, is, is we, we, yes, with a conditional use permit, it is by individual, um, evidences before us. But at the same time, we are setting somewhat of a precedence by doing something somewhere. We just gotta be careful of what we do and, and what we're telling, um, businesses that we're willing to do in other areas. Um, especially with trying to attract more businesses to Eastville. So it's just something we have to keep in mind regardless of how we vote. There's a motion on the floor. And did somebody have something? Johnson?
I, um, for the restriction on the hours, I, I do think that, I, I agree that, you know, there's, we, we don't need to be selling alcohol at two AM or, or anything. But I also do wanna point out and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Ralph's stop, or Ralph's or other grocery stores, a few of them open until one AM. Um, so do they sell alcohol until one? Because if that's the case, I think it would only be fair that we impose one AM instead of midnight, just to be fair to our businesses.
I, I don't, I don't know the exact timeframe of when Albertson's or Ralph's sells their alcohol till, uh, whether they stop at midnight or one, and we can look into that, but I, maybe Lieutenant Martin knows.
I'm sorry, I don't know. I think at the same time, these are i- individual businesses, they're individual, um, conditional use permits. So I don't think that we have to necessarily match a timeframe. That's just my personal input. So with a motion on the floor, uh, is it as stands or would you be willing to adopt the things that were, were mentioned such as, uh, um, report back in six months? Cabinet to be locked and sales to be, no, or no sales to be from twelve AM to six AM?
Um, on, uh, yes to most, the, I, I don't understand why it's okay to sell beer and wine, which is already being done, but then to say, well, uh, distilled. You have to do, you have to treat this separately, but i- if you could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
I'll explain it, you get drunk faster. Seriously, in, in a most sincere way, you, you take a small fifth, which that's what we'll be selling. That is a single consumption type alcohol. That is to get a quick fix very fast. That's, that's how lording starts to occur and that's, that's the kind of the, and that, that's why there's a, the, a huge difference. That's why there's enormous difference in cost from beer and wine license to still, there's an enormous, more, sometimes liquor license can get up into the, can, you know, to the price of two hundred thousand dollars in some cities, right? Because it's such a, it's a high, beer and wine's usually eight hundred dollars, right? It has to do with just, with the issue of getting your fix much faster. And, and I don't like that representation, our city having to be able to sell bottles and no offense to Vino, I, I don't know. I know, I'm sure the seven fifty milliliter bottles are great quality, I can imagine that, but I don't know under that of good quality liquor below that. Right? As far as, you know, you have your normal well drinks, your well alcohols, right, your Captain Morgans and those things, right? I don't know if I can say that high end, but the, the problems you're making accessible, it's, it's what it represents when people and you just have to call spade a spade. People that buy fits and those things that are smaller, they are there to get a taxi. And usually, at times, it's not just going home, it's going out to the sidewalk, to those things that's. And when you compound that with just the ever looming issue of the homelessness issue, the transient issue, right? That does, we, we do have a transit that comes through, uh, transits that come through our city. You just have to look at the overall issue. That, if, if we are providing that and that, like, you, you go to Ralph's, they don't sell fits, they don't sell those ones. It's, it becomes very inexpensive to buy those type of bottles for one person to get them. That's, that's what you have to think of ahead. That, that is really the key difference is I can have half this bottle to get my fix, that's it. Versus several beers. I mean, I don't wanna be so, you know, too direct, but that is the key difference between the two, in my opinion, uh, of those things.
No, i- it's fair if that is the desire of the council, uh, I, what is the consensus? I, I'm, if that is the desire of the council, yes, we'll, we'll include that. I just, it, in my mind, it doesn't make sense, uh, with the license being for alcohol, they're selling alcohol. You, you can go buy a bunch of beers and slam those too, uh, up until two AM. I, I don't know, uh, just. I, I'm putting out there, it, it makes it interesting that we're gonna split it, uh, what they're requesting.
It's just, it's just that it makes it easier and more accessible to, to achieve the goal that wants to happen, right? And I think you invite single-use consumption very relatively quick, quickly with having those types of bottles. That's why I asked the question of what type of size bottles are you going to have? Because that is indicating of what your consumers are going to look for and the type of consumers that are looking for that. They're looking for something that's less expensive. Less expensive means less volume in, less, a smaller bottle. And that's what will be, be sold. I just wanna make that clear. Those are the items that are gonna be sold, are, are smaller bottle items. Seven fifty milliliter will be your biggest bottle item, which is your normal ones you see in a grocery store. There's nothing beyond that, right? It's everything smaller after that. That means it's less expensive. Just, uh, food for thought when, when you're thinking about this, that is what you're attracting is for that. So just, I wanna keep that in mind. Again, just real quick, 'cause I don't wanna fly, but my daughter takes me to seven eleven about four days out of the week, seven eleven, and your staff is amazing. Every time she wants the pink donut and the glazed donuts and she's awesome and you have an amazing. And you have an amazing staff. And so, and notice, I'm just saying, as a community, these are things that we need to be thinking about, right? And it's hard, since I I have a huge respect for Vino, but I'm also looking, in my opinion, what is the best interest of of the people of Eastville? And then what we're, what are we really trying to create here with the idea of convenience? And who are we conveniencing exactly with bottles that are fifths? Right? That there there is a stigma with that, so you ju- just think about that as as you go on, and you're not going in getting a handle for a party. Handle meaning one point five liters or whatever, that's not being sold. You're getting much smaller consumptions. So I just, that 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 was, that's kind of my point to that, so.
And councilor or mayor Pro- Pro Tim Plot, you make a very good point, because when you think of seven eleven, most. Most items that you buy at seven eleven are for immediate consumption. Um when you buy something at seven eleven, you're typically buying a candy bar, bag of chips, and a soda, that you're probably gonna finish by the time you get home. Um, so with that being said, I mean, I don't mean to to mess up the motion too much, but do we need to adjust the condition of? Of what's being sold? And I do have a question regarding the conditions. All the conditions refer to beer and wine. Does that need to be adjusted also?
So, since this is a, what do you wanna say, like a revision to the existing C U CUP? So we have to keep the conditions that were originally a part of it there. So if we wanna add any additional conditions, like you're doing for um the time and for the coming back to the planning commission. You can do that, so if you'd like to have some conditions that talk about the distilled spirits or hard alcohol. Uh but what, you have to keep the old conditions in and and then you will modify them, because both are in effect. There's one CUP. And we're modifying it to add uh hard liquor.
So we have no condition in there for the size of the hard liquor?
Not hard liquor. There is a condition in there for the size of beer and wine, that is correct, sir.
I'm sorry, one of the conditions was um. Okay. Okay. I I I had read that as to meaning hard alcohol on the COA eleven, okay.
We did too initially. We did some investigation back in May.
I would recommend that we add something regarding the hard liquor. Um. I'm not an alcohol drinker, so I don't even know the sizes or. A- anything about them, so I don't even know what would be. Um, I I just think there needs to be some, going back to council member plot, there needs to be some sort of um. Minimum size, and I don't know what would be appropriate, because I mean, I, you see just a little shot lens also, that something like that could be sold. I'd assume it wouldn't, but I think to be safe, if this were to be approved, that we should set some sort of condition on the size.
Yeah, I I would say my recommendation, nothing smaller than seven fifty milliliters, which is your, just your normal bottle. So basically, your normal size alcohol bottle, so with smaller than a handle, which is one point seven five liters, I'm sorry. Obviously, I I will.
Seven hundred and fifty is a a bottle of wine.
Yeah, and that's like your average kind of bottle of alcohol, anything below that, um but in the. This probably is a discussion, I don't know, I can't remember exactly.
I would note that the existing condition with respect to wine has the minimum size of three, three hundred and seventy-five milliliters. So that's, that's one of the current conditions on wine. Beer is a minimum of a twenty-two ounce bottle. Or smaller if it's sold in multi-packs, like a six pack.
No, wi- wi- with respect to to the council, um. I don't necessarily wanna see this item come back, but uh I also don't wanna see us legislating really without. Uh a full, without staff having fully vetted what that means to the the seller. Uh to to the applicant. Um, that 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 being said, I know that we are past. The the public hearing, could, is it okay to get the?
You can, you can, you can ask him to come back up and ask him if he can, if if he would agree to seven hundred and fifty milliliter size or not.
Yeah, he he gave testimony saying the size of the bottles were seven hundred and fifty milliliters, and then he said, there's some that's two hundred milliliters. And the smallest size, he said at fifty milliliters, if I'm, if I'm not.
Ge- Gina, but they're asking, would he be okay with limiting it to seven hundred and fifty, and so if you want to open it back up, you can have him come up and you can ask him that question.
Yes, just.
If not, uh seven fifty, what would be, ma- make sense as part of um this request?
Erica, for him answering questions like that, do we have to open back up the hearing technically or?
Reopen the public hearing, yeah.
Alright, at this time, we will reopen the public hearing. Mister Vino, if you'll come up and uh um maybe answer that question and address the sizes.
The sizes, seven hundred and fifty ML, uh like most of the bottles will be very expensive, because it will be high-end. So, in my opinion, I mean. Just selling seven hundred and fifty ML bottles will not make any sale or profit to the business at all. That will be very, very less, because uh people will go to uh Costco to buy a seven hundred and fifty ML bottle. So that's what my request is, that I should be allowed, as our beer, we are selling up to twenty ounces. So if somebody has to mess up with alcohol or something, they can take two twenty-ounce uh bottles of beer. It will be similar to one fifty ML of vodka. So, I mean. It is up to the council, but my request is that I should not be limited, as my beer and wine is not limited uh for only big bottles.
So the beer and wine is limited?
It is not limited.
It is.
Uh, it it is.
Correct, Erica?
Individual sales are limited to twenty ounces.
Twenty ounces.
But but if you sell it in a multi-pack, it can be smaller.
So there are limitations around the beer and wine right now?
But we sell uh like six pack, those are like twenty ounce bottles into six pack, so those are the small bottles. And same, we have like single beers, those are in the cans, so.
So, and if if we were to approve this, and if we were to set a minimum, what would be your minimum?
According to me, I should be allowed until uh up to fifty ML.
The fifty ML would just be like the little.
The little bottle.
Little, what you kinda sneak on the airplane kind of thing, right?
Yeah, they serve in the, in the airplane, yes. Yeah, in the airplane, they serve those fifty ML bottles only.
The tiny ones.
I don't know how the council feels, but I wouldn't be able to support that. Um, I think that's too easy for someone to buy and consume. Before they even get to their car. Um, and I think we could see a spike in in uh.
Vino, is there something bigger than fifty milliliters, but smaller than seven hundred and fifty, that you would do a compromise with council?
Yeah, that will be, I think it is uh one hundred and fifty ML. That is a big bottle. That is a real big bottle, actually one hundred and fifty ML, three times the size of that. Selling seven hundred and fifty ML, it will be like, I mean, fifty dollar or forty dollar bottle or sixty dollar bottle. That everybody will not go to seven eleven to buy uh sixty dollar bottle. So at least one hundred and fifty ML, if not fifty ML.
Any comments regarding that?
I would amend my motion to the the one fifty. As the smallest.
Including the other.
So Mayor, I ju- I I just wanna, currently today, he does not have a limit on beer and wine sales. That condition would be added, should he get the hard alcohol permit to be consistent with what we do with other businesses in the community. So so the current size limitations on beer and wine is not in his cu- current conditions. Uh as our planner that uh it was involved in writing the staff report, this would be added with going to a type twenty-one.
Okay.
Which is consistent with what we do with other ABC permits, but the county didn't do when they originally approved him.
So we have a motion.
So if his type twenty-one isn't approved tonight, he will, he will have unlimited sizes of beer and wine, which he wouldn't have a restriction.
And and that's kind of my, my thought is, is this upgrade in the permit is is potentially a way. That we can help adjust some things that weren't originally done. Um, as well as help the owner realize that. I don't wanna say he's under pressure, but somewhat under pressure to make sure that 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 liquor license is taken care of, because he's gonna have to come back and report. To us on what's happening. Um, so this, if approved, I think it is a way that we can tighten up some of the other. Um, conditions that the county did not do. So, we have a motion on the floor. Um, maybe council member Lorimer, do you want to uh review that motion and make sure that Mister Donahue has it correct?
In in terms, I I I would like to get consensus from the council to see on the timeframe. Uh, cause I I don't know where where everybody's at on that.
Councilmember, sorry, any input on the timeframe? I think we were talking in the condition it says two, then we talked about midnight.
Oh, is that, okay. Um, I was under the impression that uh midnight was the agreed upon. And that it was a six-month uh review.
Councilmember Yao?
Can we compromise that um for one AM simply because I I again, it's. That's, that's all we have for other stores, and I I think it's only fair that we do that.
Councilman Plot?
I I like the idea of consistency with the the one AM.
We've gotta be careful with consistencies though, because that's only one store, some of the other stores are two AM, so I don't think it's it's. I I would stick with the midnight.
Okay.
I mean, it's, my mom always told me nothing good happens after midnight. I'm a momless boy, I'll admit it.
So, wh- what I'm hearing, um Mister Plot?
Like I said, I'm just trying, it 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 being outnumbered, and and I'm just trying to put the, so I think this is more discussion for you guys' input at this point. Um, yeah, my my mom still said I'm I'm doing it twelve AM, they'll feel my thoughts.
Okay, so what the consensus then? So we're gonna do the twelve, the six month. The um hundred and fifty milliliters as the bottom and. And the cabinet kept. And, yeah, is it right? Is it?
Do we have a second?
Six months, i- is that one timer for a year, or what is the timeframe?
We, we'd like to keep it at six months i- 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 intervals, and if you wanna do it six month in one year. And then from that point forward, it's just complaint driven through code inform, uh community enhancement and safety or law enforcement. If we're getting situations, then we can bring it back for you um to reconsider, to plan a commission.
Thank you. Second.
Mister Donahue, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Hi.
Councilmember Tesari?
No.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tim Plot?
No.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Alright, moving on to item number nine, nine point one. This is why value, valuing and developing our talent and people matters for Eastville, and Mister Jones, please.
Uh, investments in our city team will ensure that we have the best professionals in place to successfully implement the council's strategic plan. While delivering the highest level of service to our residents and businesses. Um, uh. Um, and what, um. One thing that we did last year is the council identified in the strategic plan, one of the target areas, which was organizational development. And over the last, uh, that was in August, uh and we adopted it, officially adopted it November fourteenth. Um, but our management team at the city of Eastville has been diligently reviewing how to best handle organizational development. As you see in the staff report, we had a track record of turnover in staff. Ranging from fifty to percent of staff to a hundred percent at an all-time high. Uh um, and when you have fifty percent of turnover of your staff on every given year for five consecutive years. That's a lot of turnover for uh moving projects forward. That turnover is equivalent, each turnover of a staff person is equivalent to six to nine months of salary. Uh um, which each year were uh added up to hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost. To our community and to our organization, uh um, not to mention productivity. A- and um, this past year, we were able to minimize our turnover to one person out of twenty-seven. Um, which is a great testament to the management team and to the culture and every, and the council and the direction that you guys have all provided to us. Uh um, uh, we want to. Bring this item back to you to reaffirm some of the things that we have been working towards in the strategic plan. And make sure that the small incremental investment that we make into valuing our our staff. Uh uh on the grand total of the budget, as well as um the line items in the budget. Are still important to the to the council, and that you have all experienced and seen the the success. That we have had as a, as a entire organization. Uh um, in serving our residents and our businesses and our community by uh developing the culture and the talent. And attracting the culture and the talent. I think a a great example of this is, you know, in one of our recent recruitments, we had over a hundred and ninety-one applicants. A hundred and ninety-one applicants in one of the greatest economic times in the history of the inland empire. People aren't looking for jobs right now, and we had a hundred and ninety-one people wanna come to work for the city of Eastville. That's a great testament to our uh talent attraction and development team. Uh um, it, oh, uh how we're getting out, and that's, uh and telling our story about what it's like to work for the city of Eastville. And the reputation that we're de- developing in in the government sector. Um, and um, we have had some great hires this past year and great recruitments. Um, and to add to our great existing team that exists here. Um, and in the staff re- report, you you'll notice that we have um four I's. In- instruct, inform, influence, and inspire. And when we're working in the influence and inspire and allowing people to own their work and and manage their uh work. Um, we are able to do more together to better serve our residents and businesses in our community. And our management team has has been owning their work along with their teams to deliver a lot of successes. This lot, this year, and and we will be highlighting many of those at the State of the City on July seventeenth and eighteenth. Uh um, and uh, one such success is just the force, for. Four and a half star hotel that was approved at planning commission. Uh um, um, and we set a new record for processing a hotel in the state of California, here in Eastville. To back up our record that we set with opening Costco here in Eastville. Um, that reputation of predictability in the business community is bringing hundreds of millions of dollars investment to our community. Because we are predictable and and we are consistent. And we are continuing to elevate our standards and our expectations, so that we can exceed Eastville's repu- uh expectations every day. Um, with that strategic plan, that strategic plan wasn't in line with our old culture. And as every strategic plan, it takes a little bit of time for our policies and practices and our ordinances and all of our other things to catch up with it. And so, as, and we knew we were gonna have to update many of these things, from our personnel manual to our purchasing ordinances. To to our P cards, to a number of different things that are going to have to be updated. So that we can be both efficient and effective and entrepreneurial as a government agency. And there's not many government agencies that use those three E's. I've worked for many. Have worked for many, especially the entrepreneurial and the effectiveness. And um, we are being all three of those E's. Um, because of the talent and the team that we have here at the community. And so with that, I just wanted to highlight um, what we have been able to achieve this last year. Uh, as part of developing our talent and attracting our talent here at the city of Eastville and and investing and valuing our talent. Uh, um, and um, and document it and highlight. Um, so that we can re- reaffirm that we are headed in the direction so that we can go full gear. Uh, 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 to elevating Eastville and being the best city, not only in the inland empire, but Southern California. If not all of California.
Thank you, Mister Jones, appreciate it. Um, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
Council discussion. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Plot?
I have a few comments on this one. Um, because I think it's the crux of of us as a council. Um, and what we've come together as and and the goals that we have set, you know, going back to at the time, Mayor Lorimer, but council member Lorimer. Had brought up to put together to prioritize goals, which really hadn't been done and I think for me personally, I think. It was kind of like this aha moment where, yeah, let's prioritize, we'll see where we're at and, you know, public safety is up there, economic development, restaurants, all these different things. Which you realize really quickly in the moment you're thinking about this, when we're prior to the strategic planning, or sorry, the uh, uh, the goal setting meeting. For me, person, I'm I think having conversation with others, like you, the all I think became very important was, we can have all these goals set. But you can't do without the organization, you can't do without the leadership, if they're just goals on paper and that's it. And that I think collectively as a council, I I think that's why that became number one goal. Because nothing else will fall in that place, nothing else will happen. So I wanna highlight a little bit, I thought about this and I just wanna highlight things I've noticed and things I've been involved. Since we've changed leadership, since we've changed the organizational structure, the culture to be in line with our strategic vision. I'll use come a couple of quick examples that I kinda thought up and, you know, just. And and again, this I I'm using some key employees here, uh, some 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 team members from Eastville and not that. Not that if I don't say your name or say, doesn't mean you're not recognized, I you guys are all very talented, but I'll use a couple of examples. Uh, the people that go above and beyond, I'll use Gina, for example. When it came time to negotiate the hotel aspect, which by the way, never had occurred and was told that we could never have a hotel. That was the the and now it came from, not just a hotel, but a really good quality hotel. Watching Gina negotiate in that, in those moments with the Lewis's, I wasn't there for the hoteliers. But to see how fast we could get done, kinda put it in perspective here. The, when the hotel, um. Submitted their plans, we basically had fifteen to sixteen days to get that approved and get that done. Gina and her talent and her experience and the staff members that worked there were able to get that done in the fifteen to sixteen days. That's unheard of and here's the difference. There's a difference between routine type planning, just basic planning and economic development planning. And the difference is process versus entrepreneurial. And that's exactly, that that's why you get talent, you don't send for mediocrity and you get talent. You bring in and this is what's gonna happen, yeah, I think you'll see. Our residents, I think, will be very happy when they see the Hamner Place and see that hotel come fruition. The timeframe and the pressure that came in, that's why we have, right? I'll use Mark as an example. We were we were storing several documents, uh, furniture, other pieces of of things a- 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 at a storage place in in in. At um, in in the city of Norco, once we purchased the Alpha Lish property, Mark had the wise idea, let's put storage over there. Save us several thousands of dollars, right, just out of the box thinking. To point out, Mark also used to work for the city and came back and the reason why he came back. Because he heard about the buzz going on and he loved what he what he heard was going on and he came back, right, because of the the vibe that's happening. This is what happens when you change culture, people want to be a part of it. I I'm gonna use another example and this one is about Brian. I've been able to experience with Brian and this is the key point cuz he is the leader of the city, he is the CEO of the city. I've got to experience some in the negotiations with Lewis, negotiations with different restaurants. In which we've never been able to get to the table, ever, to get to the table. Not only not get to the table, but but when you hear, I mean, I'm always involved in the go, I mean, my entire career in life is dealing with. Negotiation, whether it was mergers and acquisitions, whether it's in Bay alarm or ever, I got, it's literally my entire, I and I'm telling you. He's one of the best negotiators I've ever seen, he is damn good, right, and it's not because he's. Yeah, he's tough, but he's reasonable. And I think when you, when you see the reaction with Lewis's and and the restaurants that come in. They wanna be a part of what we're creating, he creates the environment and the ambiance, I'm not trying, I don't wanna give too much details, I'm not allowed to. But when you see it come to fruition, you see the wheels turn on all parties and that's really good negotiation and that's what you do when you get talent. Again, gonna reiterate, this has never happened before and this is why you get quality is those things that happen, right? It it's people come to the table and again, I think the the pro- the byproduct of all this talent, I think you'll see at the Hamner Place, the Palopulos Land. And I think you'll see another thing, it's just the fact that we're getting all these other projects on the public safety projects, the 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 ALPR cameras, the the streetlight. That that all has to do with the qua- of getting these things ramped up and gone, it has to do with staff being able to support it, alright, um. The other thing I wanna bring up, and I apologize, I'm I'm very passionate about this particular item because I, again, I think it's the most important thing we've done at City Hall personally. Because everything else falls in place. But also that thing from past to present, relationships with our vendors struggled quite a bit. And I I won't go into the details, I don't wanna feel like I'm attacking or being part of it, but just to say that they struggled. And relations that required franchise agreements to be negotiated couldn't get done and couldn't really come to the table are now coming further to the table. And people are willing to talk, very important, it's about the dynamic you have, neighboring agencies. Alright, I'm not gonna say the neighboring agency, but I can tell you there needed to be improvement with our neighboring agencies. I can tell you that our relationship with J C D is far, far better than we've ever had. The fact that we can have a neighborhood watch event at the community center and not even be charged for doing it because they wanna be a part of what we're doing is a huge example. Of the partnership that we've created, the relationship with developers, right? I just talked about better negotiating, but again, better negotiating from past to present, we are better negotiating on the behalf of Eastville. Better than we've ever negotiated before in our history. And again, it goes back to talent, organizational structure and making sure that employees are happy to get the best productive results possible and these are the results. And again, the last thing I'm gonna bring up is employees themselves, right? It's the employee morale, the most important, we don't have specific metrics or indicators. As far as being able to measure, you use that from the employee satisfaction survey, which I think it's too early to do that type of thing, I think at some point we should look at doing that. Too early still, I think you need to let some time go by and allow some maturity to happen within the organization when you do that. But the one metrics you can use and Brian already re- related to it is the attrition stat, so I won't go over, so you had already talked about that. But that is the one metric that most companies can use as, it doesn't give you the full indication, but it gives you some inkling of employee morale. And if you have twenty seven employees and you lose one, that's pretty darn good, right, versus having twelve employees and losing six or seven. Gives you kind of an indicator of of employee morale, people wanna stay, it's a great vibe and and I give credit to the staff members. So I could give Olivia's example, I can give Angelica's an example, I give a lot of examples, I didn't mean to cover that you weren't, you guys are all awesome, right, and your teams are awesome. Um, and it's important, that's why we do these things, there's one thing I wanna bring up as far as, could I ask, uh. Uh, Erica, that I think it was okay to bring this up as a future agenda item because we are talking about P card, I I know it's come up on social media. And it's a, it's a very small piece of creating the organizational is. The, I don't know if we call it employee welfare, it's the actual item line in our budget, I know most organizations call it employee welfare. But this is one that's been a little bit scrutinized, I say a little bit, I don't know how many people, but I've I've talked with a lot of uh, residents. And what I would like to see be as an agenda item, and if coun- and if council's okay with this. Is I would like to take whatever that, and possibly two budget item lines, but one being employee welfare, if I can't remember if that's the exact name of it. But I think you guys, I think we can figure that out, what it is, Ernie or Eric can figure that out, to take whatever that budget amount is, whatever that amount is, the small amount, it's. Relatively point zero two percent of the expenditure of the budget, so it's a very, it's a very small piece, but it seems to be one that's being discussed on social media. And what I'd like to see is take that budget item line and let's say, okay, if if. If, what is this council stance on employee welfare or celebrating a birthday, okay? Right, it it or it or what we do at City Hall is we celebrate the month of January and all birthdays in the month of January. Is that okay, is that is that what we want as a council? Do we wanna celebrate a baby shower, is that okay, do we wanna celebrate uh, a- a- accomplishments? Uh, whether it be work milestone accomplishments, is that okay, right? Um, retreats for for our employees, I think that might not be employee welfare, that might be employee development. But, you know, one retreat a year, two retreats here, what is it? Thanksgiving lunch, a Christmas, like, as long as it all fits in the cost, but we just as a council say. What are we good with, what is it that we're okay with, specify it. And let's have that discussion and then bam, let's talk about it, let's get an answer, put on the shelf and get to work. Cuz I I kinda don't wanna talk about things that are point zero two percent on an expenditure on a budget when we're talking about attrition rates that cost us twenty times more than that. So I, I wanna be prudent, I wanna listen to the public, I wanna address it, I want all of us to be on the same page, it's very important. And I want us to make sure that those things are in line with our strategic plan moving forward, so I I would hope we get a consensus. To be able to have that that mature discussion and talk about those policies and what we feel comfortable with at that time, n- not now, but at the time, when it comes to be on agenda item. And that's my, and that's my comment, that's it.
I would agree, I think that needs to be brought back before council at a future time. And I think there's a consensus from the council regarding the the purchase card.
I'm seeing head on, so yes, I'll, we'll work on that.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor. And sorry for the long way to comment, told Brian, I'm like, I don't know if I'm a fan of bringing this up, since I've talked about it all the time, but if we're gonna talk about it, I'm gonna talk about it as well, so. Um, but thank you and thank you for being patient with that.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Plot. Going back to our strategic plan, I'm I'm very grateful for, like. Mayor Pro Tem Plot said at the time, it was Mayor Lorimer, council member Lorimer. And spearheading that and bringing up that that great idea, I think at the time, we were somewhat like a. Almost like a sailboat that just got caught in the wind, whatever way the wind blew. Um, with our strategic plan and once we sat down as a council and really put it together, I think we're. Um, I was thinking we're a boat, we're not only a boat, we're a speedboat. You know, we're taking off and we're we're going fast and we have a good direction, we have good control. Um, so I appreciate uh, council member Lorimer, um, uh, spearheading that and and. Helping us as a council and as a s- staff and as a city to be able to do that, so I think that was very good. But going back to that, that's where we really talked about. Our s- strategic plan and our priorities and one of the top ones was valuing and developing our talent. Um, I I don't wanna reiterate everything that that Mayor Pro Tem Plot shared, but it is. So valuable and I want our our staff to know that that's why we're bringing this up, is because we value our staff. Our staff is outstanding, I know Brian always says, I'll put my staff against any staff. Um, out there and and I fully support and back that up, we have an amazing staff. Um, and and we appreciate all that you do, how hard you work. And I think part of that is, is the culture that has been built over the the last little while here. People wanna come to work, they wanna work here, they wanna be a part of this culture, this organization that we've we've built over the last little while. And that's what we want, we want, um, we want that to happen because you're more productive when you want to come to work, when you want to do something, when you feel valued. And our residents see that, over the last couple of weeks, we've gotten a number of emails from developers or from residents that have said, wow, thank you. One was specifically regarding the hotel, um, just recognizing our our entire staff on how well we've done, but just. We get emails from residents also just saying, you know, how well our staff's doing, so it's all, I I think it's all because of how. Um, valued, empowered, um, that you feel as a staff, so thank you, great job, keep it up. Um, we appreciate all you're doing and we we support you, so. With that being said, if there's nothing else, I think this is a uh, receive and file, correct, there's no.
No, there's recommended actions, I think, um, staff is looking for the coun- a council motion, um, to.
Oh, to reaffirm.
To reaffirm all the the items that are listed in the recommended action.
I'll move approval. Second, Mister Donahue.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Uh, on behalf of the entire team here at the city of Eastville, I wanna say thank you for the unanimous vote of reassuring. That valuing and developing our talent and people at the city of Eastville is a top priority for all of you. Um, I couldn't, I I can speak for, I can speak for every single one of them. That they appreciate the guidance and and the policy direction that you guys provide and allowing us to do our job to the fullest potential that we have the ability to do here. And um, I also wanna thank um, my management team. Um, last year in July, we created a management team, the first management team in in the history of the city of Eastville. And um, and when oh, there's been a lot of comments about, wow, we we have a lot of management here. Uh, um, I can tell you that we compensate our our management team with eighty hours uh, uh, of comp time. Some of the management team, um, do eighty hours of extra comp time in the first two months of the year, so the other ten months of the year. Uh, uh, um, is is um, free to the to the to the residents and businesses of our community, right? Uh, um, and so I I I I have to kick many of them out of City Hall in the evening. And say, go home and enjoy your families and it's not that they don't enjoy their families, they enjoy serving and being servant leaders to the residents and businesses of Eastville. And I couldn't thank them enough for the hard work and dedication that they do to take on owning their roles as managers in the city of Eastville. And as a result, they are investing and developing our 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 teams underneath them. Um, and allowing them to run with their projects as well. And so on behalf of myself and City Council, I wanna say thank you to the management team for all the hard work that you do. To empower our teams to be as productive as we have been this last year, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's one of the things is Brian just shared there, too often in organizations, we look at expenses rather than investments. Especially with employees, I think that we look at those more as investments rather than expenses. Um, cuz we're investing into our employees and I know council member Plot had one more, he said, quick thing.
This will be very fast, it is about expenses, uh, I I can't believe I forgot this.
Councilmember, sorry, he's had enough.
Yeah, sorry, you may wanna hear this cuz this is actually important, uh, you'll be, so. One of the, one of the criticisms was that, hey, you're spending a million dollars in personnel and I think we all knew behind the scenes what we couldn't say. And really wasn't a million dollars, we had a mid-year budget, for the sake of arguing, comparing one budget to this year's budget, it was a million dollar increase. For the make, to make it simplistic, we knew what it was really going to be, but we couldn't talk about it. Um, basically, what we really were able to do was to relieve some of the contract staff, which ended up being about six hundred thousand dollars. And you you don't wanna talk about those things that what you know is going to happen, part of that is the hiring of having a community development director who can kinda help oversee planning and, um. Or the, thank you, engineering, and so. The technically, the net of personnel, when you really compare operations and you compare personnel, you put them together in the expense line, right? The reality is, the actual real expenditure and this, I think, then you see, wow, there's a lot of value in that, is net four hundred thousand dollars is what we've increased. And you look at the talent, the management staff behind it. I think that's a really cool, that's a good thing, just put that in perspective, dollar amounts, right, it's not really a million, it's actually four hundred thousand dollars, so I just wanna make that point, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, councilmember Plot, you can now start your comment with, now that council. Alright.
We have speakers in the bathroom, he heard it.
We're moving on to nine point two, uh, Corona Norco Unified School District presentation of overview of schools and district related topics. Mister Jones, will you please introduce the item?
Yes, I I I'd like to in- uh, invite, um, the assistant superintendent on behalf of Dr. Lynn. The superintendent to come up and speak with you on and uh, and update you on some things that are going on in the Corona Norco Unified School District. As as well as a a conversation about an additional school site resource officer, uh, for Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Um, so i- if you can come up and 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 introduce yourself to the team and 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 share a little bit about yourself and then and then. Your presentation, uh, we would appreciate it, thank you very much.
Uh, th- thank you, uh, before I get into my presentation, I do wanna congratulate you, uh, that I'm talking about the team. Uh, th- thank you, uh, before I get into my presentation, I do wanna congratulate you, uh, that I'm talking about the team, uh, the, the city leadership and also the, uh, city manager and, uh, cause that momentum, that's what I was hearing, the momentum that you're, that you speak about, I, I see it, I see it, and I, you know, longtime resident here of, uh, the Corona Norco, uh, Eastville community, so congratulations on the, the momentum again that you got, you have developed with your strategic plan. So, uh, so my name is, uh, Dr. Sam Boudrostro, Deputy Superintendent of Corona Norco, the, um,
Did I give, did I give you a promotion to Assistant Superintendent?
Uh, no, uh, actually, uh, it's all good, it's all good, no, no worries. The, uh, so anyhow, al- always, uh, glad to be here and, and we have a great partnership, uh, with, with the city of, of Eastville, and, uh, we, we hope to continue, um, and, uh, we've had a great partnership with Brian, with your leadership as well. So, um, yeah, so I'm here obviously to talk about the schools, and obviously, we're really proud of the schools here in Eastville. Uh, we have great schools overall in the district, uh, fifty-one, uh, different schools with fifty-three thousand students. Um, the, uh, so, all the challenges are there, uh, but, uh, we're, we're obviously very proud of the work that, uh, Corona Norco continues to achieve. Uh, overall, really, uh, I'm, I'm here with a little bit of a focus, I didn't bring a presentation today, cause I, I just wanted to to, uh, provide you a couple of insights, and, uh, I'll also put in a request, but also address questions that you may have. Um, and, and by the way, we also have Captain, uh, Sheriff, uh, Captain Morn, who, who's here today, that, uh, uh, I'd like to hear from him as well. Um, so anyhow, so, uh, as you know, uh, we are building, and, uh, a, a year from now, pretty much, we open up Rondo. And, uh, Rondo, what Rondo's gonna be able to do is gonna relieve some of the pressure from our biggest schools, and our biggest schools at the elementary level, uh, being, um, Parks and, and Reagan, and I know some maybe have children at those schools. So, uh, we're gonna, those schools are gonna go, uh, right now, Parks being the largest one with a little bit over seventeen hundred, one of the very biggest in the state, uh, seventeen hundred students. Uh, and, uh, Reagan having over fifteen hundred students, we're gonna be able to, uh, reduce those uh, to have, um, uh, a year from now, again, August, but, uh, um, actually, I'll say July. Uh, so, so we're gonna be able to have, uh, uh, Parks, Reagan, and, um, and Rondo, uh, bring them down in, in the neighborhood of, uh, eleven hundred, so it's gonna be really nice for the community. As we look out, as far as the, the, of the schools, uh, specifically speaking of the elementary schools, uh, we don't have any other plans to, to build, uh, another school, because those numbers do taper off. And, uh, if we look into projections five years out, um, the, the, the numbers continue at, basically, at, at the, at the same pace there. Obviously, we'll, we'll, we work with, uh, demographics, and we, and we'll take, continue to take a look at what we have. Um, don't really see a re- a re- a, um, our schools in the next five, five, six years uh, be- being able to move our schools to traditional, other than, than Harada, than Barton, I'm sorry, other than Barton, that, that is a traditional. Um, so anyhow, that's, that's about the elementary schools, uh, so we're really looking forward to the opening of, um, of, uh, Rondo, a, a year from now, and, and continuing to, to, to work with, with the city, cause there'll be some challenges with traffic and things of that nature. By the way, uh, on the sixteenth of July, we will approve the, the, uh, the boundaries, so there is gonna be a shift uh, with Rondo opening up, the, the shift of, of bringing in families from, from Parks and from Reagan, so. And, uh, but, we'll continue to communicate that to the city staff. Um, so, uh, as we look at the intermediate schools, there's not a whole lot of transition with the tra- or, or changes with the intermediate schools, uh, those re- remain pretty steady. Uh, but the one cha- the, the biggest change that I'm here to talk to you about tonight i- is, uh, i- is the growth that continues over, over at Roosevelt, which is a, a massive school, uh, we're really proud of, of Roosevelt. The, the over one thousand graduates for, for a senior class. And, uh, and one thing is having the numbers of one thousand, but with the other thing is having the quality of a school that it is, so I know that, uh, as, uh, as employees and as residents of, uh, we're all really proud of the community and the school and the caliber and the leadership that I know you, you value a lot, so. So with that, uh, the East STEM opens up in August, and it's a gorgeous building, and originally, it was, it had been planned for a thousand students. Uh, it was scaled back a couple of years back, just for clarifications, when it went from a buil- being a three-story building to a two-story building, it was scaled back to a capacity of eight hundred and thirty students. Uh, we're gonna keep that, the plans for, for the, for the East STEM for the next five years, uh, we're gonna keep it at seven hundred and between seven hundred and sixty and seven hundred and eighty students. Uh, for clarification purposes, yeah, when we first opened up the East STEM, uh, cause it's been open now, uh, it's going into its fourth year, uh, but we haven't had the building, we've had the, the relocatables. Um, the, uh, when it first opened up, it was opened up to, to the district, uh, as a whole, so, and anyone living in, uh, in Corona, uh, Norco or Eastville could, could apply to go to, to the STEM. Uh, we didn't have that many requests to begin with. Uh, but now, uh, two years ago, and now this, this upcoming year, um, we do have a priority list, and the priority is to the, to the residents of Eastville. And, uh, so we did not, uh, accept any other transfers in, uh, for the East STEM, because it is the ci- the residents or the, the, the families of Eastville, we have plenty of folks who wanted to take up those, those seats, and I think it's about a hundred and eighty seats um, for, for the program, so moving forward, we, we anticipate it's just gonna be for the, for the, uh, we, the program is such a fabulous program, as, as you know, the STEM program, there's a, so the, it's, it's just a powerhouse, it already is a powerhouse, so. So we, we anticipate that the, the residents of Eastville and the students obviously of Eastville take advantage of that. Uh, so we're not allowing intra-district transfers, it's just, uh, because of the size of the scope, we're just allowing, keeping it within house. Uh, overall, the, the, the Roosevelt High School, um, as far as the capacity for, for the, the main campus, it's four thousand as a capacity. Uh, next year, um, we are going to be at third, again, only Roosevelt, not the East STEM. We're gonna be at, um, at thirty, thirty-six, thirty-six hundred. Overall, between both schools, we're, uh, we're gonna have forty-four hundred students, um, to, for next year. Uh, five years from now, uh, and actually, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're gonna hit our capacity at, at, at the school, and I, I'm not gonna say our capacity, uh, stand corrected, we're gonna hit our high, and our high is gonna be that the school's gonna have, uh, for two years, right now, looking at, uh, numbers, it's gonna have forty-six between both the East STEM and, and, and the, the main campus, it's gonna have forty-six hundred students. And that, that is, it's, 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 it's peak. The capacity for the school itself is forty-eight, uh, forty-eight hundred students, so four thousand eight hundred. Uh, obviously, I, I say that because one of the things that, that we have come in, has brought up to atten- our attention, and we're aware of it, is the size and the challenges that, that the size, uh, of the school brings. We do have, uh, from a safety component, which is really what I wanna highlight tonight, from a safety component, uh, we have a great administration. Uh, we got twelve, uh, security, uh, staff security, uh, guards, and, and, um, the, um, which is the largest, obviously, and the numbers justify that, but we only have, and I say that, a one SRO, and, um, the, uh, I'm not, I don't wanna steal Cap- Captain Morn's, uh, uh, thunder, but, uh, it is a challenge, because uh, teenagers, no matter how good, there's challenges with growing up in adolescence, so. So, uh, the, the officer's extremely busy, and over the la- course of the last two months, we've been discussing, it can we, can we get creative? And that's why I'm here tonight as well, is can we get creative, and can we, uh, uh, have a partnership to, to help out, help us uh, bring a second officer, um, uh, to, uh, SRO to, to Roosevelt, because of the challenges of now having two, two campuses. So, anyhow, I'll kind of leave it there, the, um, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, uh, Brian, if you, if you want Captain Morn to jump in and talk about the challenges of, of, uh, of the amount of, of caseloads that we have with the children and, and the, the, the issues that a large high school deals with?
I think if, that would be, uh, if you, if you can keep it very general and not specific, that'd be good, uh, just to talk about the caseload. I thi- I think the other thing, um, that would be of interest to the council is to understand how many school site resource officers you have at other high schools, or, or, um, so that, um, you know, they, um, so that they can understand, um, you know, cause we look at like Haruba Valley, and they have school, high schools that are fifteen hundred to two thousand school, students, and they have one school site resource officer for each one of their high schools. Uh, um, and, you know, Eleanor Roosevelt is twice that size, a- and, um, a- and so, um, how, you know, there, there's a per capita or per seat, uh, revenue coming in for, to provide those services, and so, uh, you know, in- instead of having two campuses, there's a cost savings of having one campus with one administration uh, and oversight and, and whatnot, and so, is there, is there, um, a cost savings with, with doing that, that? Um, so I think that's one thing the council would like to kinda understand of how to, how are other high, high scho- high schools, um, size-wise, um, as, as well as school site resource officers at, at, in, in the Corona Norco Unified School District.
Okay, uh, but, thank you. So, um, our other schools, and I'm first gonna, uh, talk about our, uh, alternative high school and our continuation high school and, um, that are in the city of Corona. Those, uh, two schools, uh, one ranges between five hundred and seven hundred students, cause it's, it's one of those that fluctuates throughout the year. I'm just referring to Lee Pollard. Uh, and Lee Pollard and Orange Grove, and Orange Grove is typically students who have been in trouble. And, uh, that, that student population ranges between, it's a high need population, it ranges, uh, around two hundred students. Uh, those two schools share a police officer with the, with, uh, the city of Corona, and, uh, all of our schools that are in Co- uh, that are in Corona, we share the cost, and, uh, so it's split. The, um, the rest of the schools, uh, starting with, I would say that our smallest of our comprehensive high schools is, is Norco High School, which is basically two thousand students, uh, fluctuates between high nineteen hundred and two thousand. And, uh, we have one SRO there, a sheriff, sheriff SRO. And then, uh, as, as we work our way up, Coro- Corona High School, uh, twenty-three hundred students. Uh, uh, actually, it's been, uh, about twenty-five hundred students. And then from, from there, uh, we, we get into these huge high schools, so, uh, one officer, by the way, uh, for, for, uh, for Corona High School as well. Then we get into Centennial High School, about thirty-two hundred students, one officer. And, uh, Santiago High School, about thirty-eight hundred students, one officer, and then Roosevelt. Uh, again, uh, a little bit, we were about forty-three hundred students last year with one officer. So the challenge becomes in the, the, just the volume of students, and, uh, as I mentioned, we do share the cost with the city of Corona.
But we do have the best students in your district.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I brought this to the attention of the school district, because when I took over command of the Haruba Valley Station, um, I wanted to look at personnel, and I wanted to look at the safety of our schools. And I knew that, uh, Roosevelt was at around forty-three hundred students, which was astounding to me. Uh, I, I, I couldn't believe there were that many students with one SRO, so I did a little bit of investigation, and I, I wanted to know who my SROs were, and I found out that our best SRO was at Roosevelt, because she was extremely proactive and she was very organized. Um, so I went and, I talked to her sergeant, and I asked her, how, how does this work at Roosevelt, one SRO? He says, actually, she's the only one that can do it. Uh, it's absolutely crazy there. Just last year alone, she, she has students counseled five hundred and twenty-six councilings. She had six kids with guns protocol. She had fifty-six, uh, H and S, uh, which is drug investigations. She had sixty-eight calls for service non-written and fifty-one written calls for service, this is by herself. So, I, I wanna talk to her about that, because I also was thinking about moving her out of there for another, a high priority assignment. And she said, good luck finding somebody, and she wasn't kidding. Um, I asked the other SROs, and I asked the SRO sergeant, who, who else could work that school? And they said, none of our current ones, we're gonna have to recruit and find someone that's capable for doing that much volume. And then she said, oh, by the way, the STEM building's opening. And I said, how big is the STEM building? So we went and took a look, it looks like a Macy's, it's huge. It's li- it's, it's, it's four stories high, you said two stories, but it's huge. And my concern was not only the size of the school being up to forty-eight hundred people, but the fact that if there's a critical incident on that campus, and I have a school resource officers whose office is in the beginning of the school, in the front of the school, and something happens at that STEM, how is she gonna get there with, with four thousand students running her way? So I asked her, I said, is there room at the STEM office for another SRO? And she says, she said, let me check. So she came back the next day, she said, yes, there's office space for another SRO there. And I said, we need to sit down and talk about this, so. Uh, I presented it, I presented it to, uh, uh, the school district, I asked for help with this, I said, I, as far as I'm concerned, this is an officer safety issue. We have, next to that high school, that huge high school, we also have a junior high, and we have an SRO that covers several junior highs, but if something happens at that junior high and it carries over into the high school, it would be nice to have another officer at that STEM building that can respond as well. Um, right now, we have traffic issues as well, so my, my plan was, is what if we added another officer to that school? And right now, we're paying two hours overtime for the Roosevelt officer to handle traffic, as well as other concerns. If we got rid of the overtime with staggered start and stop times and had two, um, two s- school resource officers, how would that look? And we came up with some numbers, so, we presented those numbers, uh, to, uh, the school district, and then we decided, well, let's, let's ask for some more help, since this definitely affects Eastville, just in the fact that school resource officers, uh, you know, the, the, the studies I looked at, they reduce nine-one-one calls, they reduce property crime calls to the city as well as, or to the school, as well as the areas around the school. They reduce violence, uh, or even deaths to kids, because they're actually on campus. We have several CPS calls, we have fifty-one fifty calls they deal with. When a principal has a student they need to talk to, and they're a little bit concerned about the student going off, they call the school resource officer, and so there's a million reasons why, uh, adding school resource officers are important. I, I happen to look at the size of the school, and I notice that if they go forty-eight hundred, it will be the largest school in California, and like, number eight in the nation. Um, and I think it'd be something, uh, Eastville'd be proud of, the fact that they have s- two school resource officers in that school, because they, they care about the citizens. So I, I, I just, uh, thought I'd mention that. I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll turn to, uh, council for any questions or comments, Councilmember Loramore.
Thank you, um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions, uh, so the city of, the schools in the city of Corona, um, are those officers from Corona PD, or are they RSO?
Corona Police.
Okay. Um, for the, I guess we're gonna be getting up to forty-six hundred with the addition of STEM. Um, do you have a breakdown as to how many of those students are Eastville residents?
Uh, yeah, we, we could provide that, um, pretty much, it's gonna be like ninety-nine percent. And, and I say that because, uh, we closed this, the, uh, Roosevelt for transfers about four years ago, uh, cause of the size, so, uh, it's, um, so it's gonna be about ninety-nine percent, but I can get the breakdown.
I, I, I would love to see those numbers, um, and it would be appreciated. Um, for the, so, when the school districts started off, when the high school started off, how many students were at the high school approximately?
Roosevelt, like, um, God, I would have, I would have to go back, my, my guess is, it, it probably started about the two thousand, about, about two thousand students, um, back when it opened up now, about thirteen, fourteen years ago.
And at that time, how many officers were assigned, or were there any officers?
Uh, there was one.
There was one, okay. All right, and, so since that time, wi- with the increase, is, is it fair to say that, uh, where, where does the school district get the, how does the school district get its money?
So, the, overall, the district gets its money just by, for, uh, for the district's ADA is, 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 uh, average daily attendance, it would, it would be the, the largest piece. And, um, yeah, that, that's, that's the largest piece, there is, there is some, um, uh, if, if we're talking about personnel, personnel costs, most of it's gonna come from, from, uh, your student attendance.
Okay, so, student attendance, it was, you had one officer at two thousand, we've more than doubled it. Um, and, well, the majority of students are from Eastville, but you more than doubled it, so why is the district not being proactive and looking to pay for an officer on its own?
Yeah, so it's, uh, there, there's multiple pieces, but, uh, I'll, I'll say that, uh, so we did increase an officer for, with the, the junior high schools, right? The intermediate, so that, so that was increased. Uh, the growth, uh, hasn't just been in, in Eastville, it's, it's been, it's been in other areas such as South Corona, so, so we, we have that in mind as well. The, um, bottom line is the, the, since, since two thousand as well. The, um, bottom line is the, the, since, since two thousand and seven, uh, if you look at things proportionately since two thousand and seven, we, uh, per student ADA, there really hasn't been an increase. Uh, if you look at it, because when we, we, we had to take a five percent cut and, and some other pieces. So, uh, unfortunately, you, you probably deal with it as well. The person stirs, which is employee pensions that has, has cut deeply into, uh, our ability to, to be flexible. Now, I do want to say, uh, one thing, I think it's important as we move forward regardless, which is, uh, looking at grant opportunities for safety. I know that, uh, we, we, we do do that. We want to continue to do that. We have been able to receive some grants, um, that we are utilizing, uh, with both Sheriff and, and Corona PD. We want to continue to look into that. Um, the, um, because there is some money for safety. Uh, yeah, no guarantees you get the grants, but I know that we did want to, uh, apply for a grant with, with, with you a couple of years back, but it, we just wasn't, we weren't able to do it. I'll leave it at that. So, um, so we're looking for that partnership to, to continue. We'd love to do that. Uh, obviously grants, you know, we, we kind of need to wait and see, see, a lot of them are federal grants, but they take some time. But that's, that's an avenue. I think it's an important avenue. Um, so I would say that, but I think the other, the thing, it's Captain Moran said it, which is, uh, he came in and he saw the, the need and we're thinking, yeah, you're right. There's no denying it. So it's, we're kind of scrambling right now a little bit.
Okay. Um, I, I also want to clarify with you, and I, I had staff, I had asked staff this previously, um, i- if the city were to participate in, in helping pay for this officer, uh, this additional officer, um, how much time would that officer be able to do something in the city if, if they were needed?
The, uh, it would be hard for me to talk about that. Obviously, we're looking to be get creative and, 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 uh, do something collaborative with the city and obviously with law enforcement because, because, uh, law enforcement to me takes the first and foremost precedence because I don't know the, 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 um, I would say the, the quality of work that happens when, when, if you're at a site, I, and then you're asked to go service the city. And, and that becomes a huge communication piece. So, so without really speaking, I, I'd like to do something in partnership.
Okay.
But, but that's something that I, I think, I mean, we're coming here. We need to be hoping to all ideas. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Plot? Councilmember, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, what's, what's the, um, and I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it, but what's the breakdown? How much, what's the percentage that, uh, the district's paying versus, uh, city of Corona?
It's fifty-fifty.
It's fifty-fifty.
Fifty percent, yeah. So, and, um, yeah.
And what's the anticipated expense for adding this, uh, new debt?
I, I believe in, and Captain, um, Moran can clarify. I think that we're looking at about a hundred and forty thousand range.
Yes, that's correct. A hundred and forty thousand.
All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I had, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Yao?
I was going to say, but I, to me, I think, uh, I'm sure that the city of Corona thinks about it the same way. Is, uh, they are our kids. And based on the size of that school, you already mentioned that, that if it maxes out, it's going to be the biggest school in California. It, to me, it just has a big bullseye on it. So if something's going to happen, the likelihood of it happening there is, uh, I think far greater than, uh, some other, uh, institution of, you know, or, or a high school in the area. So, um, I, I, I think we, we, I would definitely like to partner. That's, that's my opinion. So, thank you.
Councilmember Yao?
Thank you for the presentation. Yes, I absolutely agree with Councilman, um, Tishari that we definitely, um, this is something that we, I, I personally would like to consider and maybe we can bring it back to the agenda. Um, that there, there's really no price tag to the safety of our kids. So that's, that's something that, um, I would love to see coming back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just had just a couple of quick questions regarding the schools. Rhonda, do we have a opening date?
I, I can get it for you, but it's going to be in August of next year.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's, uh, actually, let me go back. It's, it's going to be July because it's a, it's going to open up as a year, as a year round. Yeah, I apologize. So this year, we start July eighth, so it's probably going to be about July ninth or something like that.
And then for the STEM Academy, the building's opening, do we have a grand opening for that yet?
Uh, you know.
I know we keep on bugging you. Sorry.
Yeah, well, I'll get back to you guys on that. Uh, we had a grand opening. We've been putting it off a little bit, but I believe we might. I think we might. So I'll have to double check and, uh, what we'll do is, uh, we'll get it to Olivia. We'll, we'll, we'll get it the day.
That's just something that everyone in the city is so excited. I mean, I think everyone in the district is so excited for is that, that facility to open. So it's something, sorry to keep on asking you that, but we just look forward to it. And we just want to make sure that we celebrate that and.
Yeah. We will, we will all be there. As you know, the campus is just, I say this, and I've said it before, there will not be another campus like that. It's just gorgeous. It's just gorgeous.
And how are the road, um, the road repairs and all that coming along? Is that, is that something that has to be done before the STEM Academy's opened or, um, because I know that there's still the signal at Scholar and that sixty-eighth that has not been done yet? Is that, does that have to be done before the STEM Academy's open or?
We can look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
I, I know they're working on the parking lots right now and, uh, that's going to be finished, uh, the, the summer. I think the, the movement of the parking lot, the entrance of the parking lots, we're, and we're working on that. I think we have the, uh, the city of Eastvale has the, uh, the city of Eastvale, um, what's it?
Picnic in the park.
Well, you have something.
Oh, state of the city.
The city that's going to be there at Roosevelt. And so we're making accommodations for parking and so, some of those things. But, uh, we'll be ready to, to, to help and we'll keep communicating. But, uh, yeah.
When we, and that's one thing that I just wanted to share too. We really appreciate the partnerships. Um, that's one thing that, that Brian's done a really good job with over the last year is, is helping to build those partnerships with all of our stakeholders, school district, J C S D, Sheriff's Department, everyone. Um, but we appreciate the partnership with the school district, with State of the City, even with J C S D being allowed to use the facility for parking, for your picnic in the park. Um, those relationships and that getting together really helps and we really appreciate that. So.
Feeling is mutual.
Thank you. Um, regarding the, the additional school resource officer, um, I think it is something that we, we do need to look further into. I think it would be something, something good to be brought back. Um, I know that there was a grant that, uh, the district looked into and did a lot of work and had it ready to go and basically just needed a signature. And, uh, um, we apologize that that wasn't taken care of. Um, but we will make sure, looking at the city manager, we'll make sure that if that comes back, that that will be taken care of because that was a lost opportunity for us as a city as well as the district. And, uh, we apologize for that, but we'll make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Just to note, that was prior to my arrival.
Correct. Correct. That was previous. Um, but it was, I'm sorry, about two years ago, I think it was. Yeah. But it was a, a good opportunity that I think, um, hopefully will come back and will help us to be able to subsidize if we move forward with an additional school resource officer.
And I do want to say this, and we have a wonderful grant writer that we've been able to pick up three grants, safety related grants this year. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunity as well, definitely.
Great. Thank you. So I think there is, uh.
I'll come to your office to sign it, i- if you write the grant.
So on this, this is a receiving file, but I think one of the things that has come out of this, and if we have a consensus with the council, that we would like to see, um, the school resource officer, uh, some sort of partnership brought back to the council and see what we can do to, um, partner and, and move forward with that.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I might, I, I also heard as part of the consensus, and I appreciate that, uh, it was brought up again in the presentation, um, looking to pursue grant opportunities in this area. So, thank you.
Yes.
So, so if I got the general consensus up there, because this is a receiving file and no action tonight, um, we just wanted to have a conversation between the council and the school district. Uh, um, but you would like to come back with some recommended partnership. And so I will work with, um, the Corona Norco Unified School District, both the superintendent and deputy superintendent, uh, uh, as well as our lieutenant and Captain Moran, uh, to identify, um, uh, some recommendations that you could consider for a partnership and what that could look like. We also want to acknowledge and, and, um, we did talk about this earlier, that the, the council, um, uh, increased ten hours of, of patrol in our city, uh, and, and we just experienced all hundred hours. I, I think we're, we're very close to experiencing our first hun- full week of hundred hours, um, if we haven't already. Um, but it was happening here soon. Um, and, um, we also increased our motor, we got an additional motor officer and that motor officer was specific, um, uh, both motor officers, uh, patrol all of our schools, um, and do a lot of enforcement around our schools to make sure our children get to and from school. So just so that the community knows, we do spend a lot of our law enforcement resources around our schools and actively engage in, in helping make sure our students get to and from school safely. Um, and I just wanted to make sure we highlight that. Um, we will look to work with the school district and bring something back to you in July so that they can get, um, a school site resource officer, um, uh, onboard quicker, uh, for the new school year if that's their desire.
Thank you. And, and just a couple of things regarding that, that just came to my mind too. Just to note that the city has done a lot regarding school safety and traffic around the schools, um, such as the, the speed radars. Um, I think that's really helped. I know that helps me when I'm driving down Harrison to my kid's school and I see the big flashing light and I see the big fine that says whatever. Um, well, actually, I don't see that because I'm going to speed them and it shows my speed. Um, but, uh, maybe I just gave it away.
Never seen that fine. What are you talking about?
No, I saw it the other way. When I was driving, someone else was going the other way and it flashed up on them. But, uh, it is additional the, the crosswalks we've done. So I mean, we do take, uh, the safety around our schools and in our schools very important, um, very seriously. The question I had Dr. Ben Rostr on Rhonda, um, we, there's the Kukamunga Creek there. There was the talk of, I think it came up in our last schools, uh, Eastville Schools meeting about potentially doing a pedestrian bridge across there, um, for students to come just because we know, there's no denying it, it's going to be a, a tough traffic area there. Um, have we talked anymore about that?
Yeah. So, um, yes, well, we, we, we've been aware of the concern. Uh, I know that, um, John Van Druuska and, um, and Alan Jowz have been talking. I, I'm, I'm not sure who, uh, you had, um, Joe, uh, that left the city.
It was Joe. It'd be Gina now. Yeah.
So, so I'm not sure where, where those conversations are at since then. So, um, but, uh, I'll, I'll have.
I think that's something that we need to continue to look, look into. I think it's going to be something that's probably going to be down the road, not when it's first opened, but something that hopefully eventually we can look into because that's, that's a tough school to get to. Um, it's going to be a, a real tough one. So the more we can encourage walking, um, as well as just maybe for the councils, uh, in Publix, information, there's boundaries there that have not been decided yet. There's a couple of different options. Um, but that could really affect the way that the boundaries are, can really affect the traffic. And having a bridge across there could really help to alleviate that traffic and encourage more people to walk to school. Cause that's, there's basically, I mean, there's more than one way in and out, but there's basically one true way in and out of that school right there on Walters. Um.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that. So, yeah.
And, and, and the other thing, Mayor, we, that we can highlight is, um, we are working on the Limite Avenue extension west of Archbald across the Kukamunga Creek. And just south of there, there's a trail that goes to, um, uh, American Hero, American Heroes Park. Uh, and we're also looking at a bridge crossing there to be, uh, um, environmentally cleared with that. Um, we might also, uh, be able to amend that contract to add, um, another environmental clearance with the Army Corps for a pedestrian bridge, uh, uh, down at, um, Walters alignment with the Kukamunga Creek, just so that we can get through the federal government and the state government, uh, uh, environmental clearance. And then we can figure out funding of how it gets constructed. Uh, pedestrian bridges are a lot cheaper than vehicle bridges just because they handle a lot less, uh, weight, uh, and, and live load, uh, than, than semi trucks and, and vehicles that need to go over it. So, um, but there could be a way that we can just at least get it environmentally cleared so that we can figure out, do we go after a safe routes to school, active transportation grant? Or do we, how do we help make this happen with the school or do we have some kind of partnership in the future?
That'd be great.
That might be a, a, an entrepreneurial way to, um, speed things up a little bit with that. But you're right. It's a, Walters is almost a dead end cul-de-sac unless you want to do a, a jigsaw puzzle through the neighborhood, which I don't think the neighborhood will want, uh, eleven hundred student parents going through their neighborhood. So.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Ian. We really appreciate the partnership and appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine point three. Thank you also Captain for being here. Nine point three, purchasing ordinance update. Mr. Jones, please.
Uh, I'll be presenting.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Sorry. You said sure. I thought you meant me. So, never mind. There's some confusion.
We worked really closely. So that's why we were trying to, we were, we were arm wrestling, uh, and I drew the short straw.
Winner got to choose who.
Winner got to choose.
Got to do it, huh? So she chose you.
So, um, uh, in, in May or June, uh, we shared with council that we would be bringing back the purchasing ordinance update. Um, this is something, uh, that was created, uh, I believe back in two thousand and eleven. Um, it was only slightly updated last year for some federal purchasing requirements or something like that. But overall, the language was when we incorporated as a city and created a purchasing ordinance. Um, the structure of our city has dramatically changed since that time. Uh, um, uh, we had six or seven or eight employees back then. We now have a finance director in a number of, of different positions and the strategic plan has now dramatically changed. Uh, um, and so, um, it was time for us to update this, um, purchasing ordinance and bring it in alignment with best practices and, and to, so that we can be, uh, efficient, effective and entrepreneurial as a government. Um, so the key changes, um, one is to make the finance director the employee primarily responsible for implementing the ordinance now that we have a finance director. Uh, and that finance director can delegate responsibilities to one or more purchasing officers underneath them. Um, uh, and we are out, well, we, we, um, have a, uh, accounting manager that will be starting July fifteenth that was approved in your budget. We went through recruitment. We got great submittals. We had great interviews and, and we recruited, uh, uh, an individual. I shared that. And so we'll be introducing her, um, uh, in, um, in the second meeting of July. Um, uh, then there were, the, the definition section was added because we had a lot of words that weren't defined. And, so that helped add a lot of clarity to, to some of the definitions. We increased the threshold for the purchase order limit, uh, on the department head approval authority to twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we added an intermediate level of approval authority for the finance director, which is below ten thousand. So nine-nine-nine-nine-point-nine-nine. So one penny under ten thousand. And, and then expressly requires a contract to be executed for services worth ten thousand dollars or more. Um, reporting of administratively approved purchases to the finance subcommittee required. So any contract that I execute, uh, for twenty-four, nine-nine-nine-point-nine-nine or less, I will bring to the, uh, to the finance subcommittee within a two-month, uh, period, um, to report those. And it will be an agendized item on, on that finance committee. And so, uh, uh, those documents and contracts will be, uh, um, shared and made public. Uh, uh, clarify local vendor preference provisions and require local vendors to price match. Added provision that allows multiple purchases for the same vendor in the same fiscal year to be approved administratively provided. The aggregate value is less than seventy-five thousand, which would mean that if, um, we had three individual projects for under twenty-five thousand dollars, that we could do three projects. Um, and, and one of the reasons, um, uh, for that i- is that sometimes it is good to have some consistency on smaller projects so that with a small project, you don't want to spend a lot of time on a learning curve on what the culture and the expectations of the organization are. And so sometimes, uh, we have people that we can rapidly deploy. On what the culture and the expectations of the organization are, and so sometimes uh we have people that we can rapidly deploy. Um to get work done for us, uh um and and they understand our expectations and there isn't a learning curve there. Um and then purchases from Alpha, uh oh, so the these are just examples, so. Um purchases from Alpha Consulting uh in fiscal year nineteen twenty. If if there was a scope for fifteen thousand dollars and it was approved by myself, the city manager administratively. And then I took it to the finance committee uh um and reported it. Then we had a a a RFP and they won the RFP and they had a fifty thousand dollar contract. Uh um and and it was brought to city council and um and you approved that contract. Um then there's uh then there was a small quick project that we needed them to do, which was five thousand.
Oh, five thousand.
Uh uh um five thousand uh for Scope C, which was approved administratively. Um then um the fifteen thousand, so if you go uh um. Um i- i- then if they, if we needed one more project and it was fifteen thousand, I would need to bring that back. To council because fifteen plus fifty plus five, i- i- and the next one would be fifty fifteen thousand. There's two ways to look at this, a- a- and I I wanna highlight. That fourth scope, Scope D would require me to come back to council, even though it's fifteen thousand dollars or less. Uh uh or it's under the twenty five thousand threshold that I could approve administratively. Now, we could look at this and say, hey, the fifty thousand was approved by council, and so that's not part of the aggregate. We could say we're only looking at seventy five thousand, that's aggregate administratively approved, rather than. So a- and and we'll go into the next example here, uh um. Um purchases for Beta Consulting in in fiscal year nineteen twenty, twenty four thousand for Scope A. There's a change order for twenty four hundred, which is less than the ten percent amendment that can be approved administratively by the city manager. Um and the second change order for for twenty two thousand dollars, I would need to bring back to council because that would be beyond. Uh my assigning authority. Then if a twenty four thousand dollars for Scope B was approved by the city manager. Uh um and so then when you add up twenty four twen- twenty four thousand, twenty four hundred, twenty two thousand, two hundred. Plus twenty four thousand, if there was a change order for that second one of twenty four hundred. I I would need to bring that twenty four hundred dollar contract to you, it would cost staff. Um more than twenty four hundred dollars to write a staff report to bring to council to approve a twenty four hundred dollar amendment. Uh um ju- just to put that in perspective. Uh um the time that it requires and the posting and all that stuff and the city attorney and the city manager review and all that stuff. So um that that's where I bring up the the part of administratively. The aggregation of of ca- uh city manager and that's for you to to determine whether it should be administratively aggregated or over encompassing. Because if at the beginning of the fiscal year on July one, we did an RFP and we approved a hundred thousand dollar contract for a contractor. Every contract from then on out would require council approval, no matter if it was a thousand dollars, five hundred dollars. Twenty four thousand dollars, it would need to come back to council because. A contract that was already approved by council was greater than the seventy five thousand, so just to keep that in perspective. Uh um when we're looking at uh efficiencies versus effectiveness versus entrepreneurial and 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 so. Um these examples, city purchases for widgets from supplier A at five thousand dollars apiece. City later determined it needs one more widget uh and purchases from supplier A. I- is this a change uh is this a change order or a second and separate purchase, right? Um and the and the finance director will have the authority to make that determination and and I and Erica will wanna chime in on this.
Yeah, so this is, I put this example in because I wanted to make it clear that it is not possible to write an ordinance. That can anticipate every single possible scenario. Um and so we have included a provision that allows the finance director the authority to deter- make determinations and interpretations. Uh uh on a case by case basis based on the facts, in my personal opinion, the answer to this question is gonna depend on a lot of things, it's gonna depend on, well. Is the P O still being fulfilled, did you issue it just like a couple days ago and you haven't received your first four widgets yet? Or are you talking about months, m- months and months later? And those are little factors that come into play in making these kinds of determinations, so we wanna give that kind of flexibility to staff. And and anticipate that they're going to be unforeseen situations.
Or does the city manager need to negotiate that second, that fifth widget to be four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and ninety nine cents? So uh council options, the the um this. The city council may either introduce and propose the proposed ordinance amending chapter four point zero six of the code. Or introduce the proposed ordinance amending chapter four point six of the code with edits read into the record. And so um and then continue the introduction of the proposed ordinance amending chapter four point six to a later date and direct staff to incorporate. Requested edits and depending on how big the edits are, will determine whether you need to go on two or three. And and Eric will help provide some direction on that, i- if if there's some substantial edits uh um to this. Uh um then we're gonna recommend three, if there's some minor edits to it. Uh we we can go with two and if you like it as it is written, we can go with one. Um and you can say that you don't like any three of these options and we can figure that out as well. Um but um um we, this was our best staff at uh Erica and myself and the management team. Um and the finance uh team uh reviewing uh the purchasing ordinance uh as well as. What other agencies are doing um and to really focus on delivering uh the strategic plan of an effective organization. Um for all of you, so um we just wanna make sure that. We are being both efficient and effective at delivering performance and and making sure the process isn't getting in the way. Of delivering results and performance.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Donnie, do you have any uh public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
We'll uh turn to council for discussion, Councilmember, sorry. Councilmember Real? Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you, uh thank you for the presentation, I don't know if the examples were meant to clarify, but they didn't. But I I we appreciate it, maybe it's been a long day, but um having read through the staff report. Um one one of the things, the the twenty five thousand or twenty four, up to twenty five thousand. I'm actually comfortable with that number, what I'm not comfortable with is. And that that can be re- re-upped three times up to, instead it should read up to seventy five thousand. Um so I would like to keep it at the twenty five thousand um for uh. With without obtain obtaining approval.
Can you say that again?
See, it has been a long day, right? Okay, so the the ordinance is written, says that uh the city manager can do up to uh twenty five thousand. Right, um and then a- and correct me, staff.
It has to be less than twenty five thousand.
Twen- twenty four nine ninety nine 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 dot ninety nine, um so twenty four nine 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 on. However, uh that can be redone three times, up to. Okay, two more, up to. Seventy four, yeah, nine 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 nine, so. I'm good with the ordinance as written, I would like to just cap it at the twenty five thousand. And not allow up to the seventy five, okay?
And then that's and that's uh the council of law, and then that's aggregate, right, total aggregate. Like so if you had a twelve thousand and then all of a sudden you had twelve thousand nine hundred ninety nine, that's still okay, cause it's still gonna aggregate to twenty four. Okay, yeah, I actually find that interesting, cause I I I think we're on the same page a little bit, but I. I not, okay, so I I wanna kinda hear everyone's comments on this, but my my thoughts were. I would kinda the same thing, counselor, but I I'm actually one of the thought of not going to seventy five, but taking it to fifty thousand. Almost in this, and this was not, just cause of hearing you, this was kinda my thought going into it, was to bring it down from seventy five to fifty. But the same thing as far as the having the aggregate be at fifty thousand. And that's anything, whether it's city council approval, city manager approval, you know, whatever, whatever. Is the total aggregate ends up being under fifty thousand dollars, so anything over that has to get approval. I'm not a fan of building, you know, too many processes and parameters, I don't like that, um but I do feel seventy five thousand is a little a little high. A little bit, at least from my my comfort level, but I I'm open to anything, so I'm not trying to say I'm not flexible. Um and again, I I maybe twenty five thousand might be too low for me, but maybe the middle ground's fifty. Um and it's funny because that's prior to hearing you said that was kinda something I was going into when I heard this, so for me, it's 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 around fifty thousand. I think and and maybe that's a good middle ground, maybe not, but probably need to have more further discussion. But but everything else that that counselor Lorimer is saying is I agree with, just other than the total aggregate amount, instead twenty five is fifty for me, yeah.
If if I may clarify also, I I wanna clarify that this is not about. Any individual that is here, I'm looking at this process for well, long into the future. So um that 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 and what I'm worried about is just. We wanna make sure that we have as many checks in place as possible, so that something doesn't go wrong. That 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 that's that's where I'm coming from on this, and I do not anticipate something going wrong. I just want to make sure that we do not get to that point, so thank you.
I have a a question for Councilmember Lorimer, would maybe one of those checks we created, and I don't know, and I kinda want your thoughts on it. One of the checks we we did create, and I thought it was a pretty one, is is at the finance committee, it it's always existed, you you can pull it up anytime, but now it's to have a separate agenda item. You know, whether it's, you know, agenda item number two, cause there's only really one one agenda item, and that's just going over the warrant register, but having the agenda item number two on there. And that is these purchases that are five thousand and above, you know, and and. Or something that would add to the aggregate, so it's something that's actually noticeable on an agenda item. Would you, I guess my question is, in your mind, would you consider that a check and balance from the finance committee? And and it's easier for the public to see because it's a second item, they don't have to sit through hundreds of different. Actually, in some cases, it's thousands of different uh items, you you can, it's right in front of you, that these are things that weren't necessarily approved by council, but spent with that. Be a good enough, uh uh I'm I'm trying to get your thoughts as far as a a check and balance.
Well, I I I appreciate the 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 question and and I appreciate that additional thing that was brought up. At the previous council meeting and I think that we should absolutely have that. Um but where I'm coming from with this too is that twenty five thousand dollars, it it it's nothing to sneeze at, you know. Uh I I do think that we have a fiduciary responsibility as a council and that. Things above that, it should come back to the council for approval, so those are my thoughts, thank you.
I I have no comment, just other than my thought was doing a fifty thousand aggregate and not seventy five, but everything else that counselor Lorimer, I'm in agreement with.
Thank you. Um uh how does that work if the limit was higher than twenty five thousand? Our purchase ordinance talks about. On page, I don't know, page seven of the staff report. It says competitive formal bidding procedures for anything basically twenty five thousand and above. So how would that work if we have something at twenty four nine ninety nine? And then all of a sudden, a change order comes in at five thousand, now we're over that, twenty five thousand.
So that a change order for five thousand dollars i- is greater than the ten percent that the city manager has the ability to do. So if it's a change order to a previous contract, it can only be within ten percent of that appre- uh the previous contract. And and so if it was twenty four nine nine nine, the 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 the. Ten percent of that would be two thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars, uh um and that would be ten percent. If it was something greater than that, it would require coming to council, because that's a change order to the twenty four thousand nine 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 dot nine nine. Uh um should, uh with the the fifty thousand is an aggregate, so if we did five. Or ten five thousand dollar projects, uh uh or that somehow were one. Under a penny uh uh of fifty thousand, uh um then that is one thing. If we did two twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars, we could technically get to about. Uh forty nine thousand uh nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and ninety nine ninety eight cents. Because the two pennies that were on the two contracts prior, so I mean the um. So it's the i- i- the fifty thousand isn't what what we can spend on a project, it's twenty five thousand on a pro- uh tw- under twenty five thousand on one project. Uh um but on multiple projects not exceeding fifty thousand.
So I guess my 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 main question on that is is, and my main concern on that is, is I just don't want us. To divide things up to avoid the bidding process, to 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 avoid a competitive bidding process.
So 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 th- that is how we identify unique and specific projects. A- a- and so uh um if we have um uh like if we had a. Traffic calming design um for intersection in residential neighborhood A. Uh um and then we had a traffic signal design um in intersection B, right? Those are two unique and different projects, right? Um now if it was um two traffic uh calming projects. And we executed them one day apart from each other, um that uh um and they were in the same neighborhood. Uh uh um that that is starting to look like one project. Uh um now if one happened um early in the fiscal year and one happened another eleven months, cause we realized we needed another. Project, that might be considered a second project rather than uh tied, but we'd have to sit down with the city attorney and identify. Is this too close to um uh a- an amendment or is this too close to an add-on or or whatnot? And so um I I think the language and the the ordinance um uh provides a little bit of clarity, but all uh um. Uh 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 to to identify what that looks like.
Okay, yeah, cause that's.
Our our goal isn't to break, our our goal isn't to break those things up.
Okay, that's my, that's my main concern is just making sure that it's as um. Clear with that, that we're just being as um being as transparent as we can with that, that it's.
Yeah, a- a- and and you know, there there's been some comments like on twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine. A- and I can tell you that we've had contracts since inception of Eastville eight years ago. For twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine in 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 our registry, um and and most city managers. Uh I'm the fifth city manager in eight years, but most city managers have approved something and oftentimes. Uh it's because we're getting something of greater value than twenty four thousand nine hundred and nine, and we've negotiated it down. To get the work done, so we can execute it.
That's exactly, and I I, you know, i- if that's a leverage point, for sure, that that can be so used as a leverage to to get someone to come down within it, yeah. I, yeah, absolutely.
Regarding the the aggregate amount, um I would agree that if we we lower that, I don't know. Where the council's at on on what we lower it to, um and I understand, Brian, your concern with, you know, if.
Fifty thousand dollars is acceptable to staff.
If it's a twenty four hundred dollar change order that needs to come back to council, yes, I understand that, but that just. From my standpoint, that means that we just need to make sure that we plan ahead a little bit better, that we know what's going on, we know what change orders to. Um to expect and hopefully address them before they actually become change orders, that we can address them in the original scope of work. So that we don't have to come back for a thousand dollar change order or whatever it is. Um that may happen sometimes, but hopefully we can just.
It it happens more than not, uh um because there's things that after we get into the project that we realize that needs to be added on. Uh um so um uh you you know, part of it is if we go at five miles per hour, we can see every sign on the roadway. And we can heat every warning, um if we move a little faster, we might miss occasionally a sign or or a thing, and so. It's really balancing pace with performance and process. Uh uh um a- and so um a- as I've always said, as your city manager, we're here to exceed Eastville's expectations every day. Some days we win, some days we learn, but we always give and try our best, uh um and we are gonna make mistakes. And and we are gonna forget things that we're gonna have to come back and do amendments.
And that happens, that happens, it's just if we don't, if we don't set that limit. It can just slowly keep on creeping up and then. Our responsibility is to to the residents and the taxpayers. Our responsibility is to, to the residents and the taxpayers and.
So is ours.
Pay. So. That's what I mean, us as a team.
Yes.
Um, so we need to just, I, I feel that we, we set that limit and, yeah, unfortunately, we may spend more. To prepare a, a change order staff report than the actual change order, but that's just something we have to realize and.
We, and, and.
Try to minimize.
We're, we're fine.
Realize and minimize.
We just wanna acknowledge that, that sometimes happens because the process is bigger than the end result. Uh, um, and so we also wanna make sure that we aren't focused on being perfect and, eh, because perfection is the enemy of progress. A- a- and we can bring the organization to a standstill if we wanna focus on being perfect.
So is there any discussion on the aggregate amount? I know there was a twenty five thousand, it was proposed a fifty thousand. Councilman, sorry?
Yeah, I would, I, I, I agree with the, uh, I think fifty is acceptable.
Then.
Yeah, aggregate amount, so I would move approval, uh, with the, uh, change from the aggregate of seventy five down to fifty.
Second.
That's a simple amount of change. We can just do that.
Discussion? Councilor Plot?
Simple question. What if there's, um, reverse change orders? Happens quite a bit. You know, where they need to pay back five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, something, you know, what, it happens at times. I can imagine it happens. Um, I know I've been on the side of that. Um, does that go back into the aggregate less? Kind of, we'll talk, but it.
We, we'd have to, we'd have to document that to, to demonstrate that, uh, we executed a contract for twenty four thousand and we only spent nine thousand. Uh, um.
So that would happen possibly with purchase of goods where we have, um, a set price for an item. And then when we get the item, they may, they may do a price adjustment, but typically with purchases for services. The contract is for a set amount that they can draw down from, and it, they may or may not get that. Full amount based off of actually, the amount of services actually used by the city. So we would use the contract amount to do the calculation. Um, unless the term of the contract is ended and they can no longer draw down from it or something like that.
So, so, uh, i- if we close out a contractor, we close out a project. Uh, um, a, a lot of times we'll do a scope of work for twenty four thousand dollars. And the consultant only needs nineteen thousand dollars to do it, or we eliminate some part of the scope and they only spend nineteen thousand. If we did that, we, we might go back and amend the contract to make it nineteen thousand dollars, so we have. Five thousand dollars, uh, uh, additional capacity for that aggregate. Um, and we'll have to figure out that process when it comes. That, um, so, um, our goal is we, we try to put it into contracts. Uh, and we don't, uh, to, to anticipate what we need, and sometimes we don't, we get into the project and we don't, we realize we don't need that. And so it happens for both widgets as well as professional services.
If there's no further discussion, then Mr. Donahue, if we can have a vote. Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tan Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to nine point four, selection of League of California Cities, two thousand nineteen annual conference delegate and alternates. Uh, Mr. Donahue, please.
The two thousand nineteen League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled for October sixteen through October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. In Long Beach, uh, one important aspect of the annual conference is the annual business meeting when the membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. In order to vote at the business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate and appoint up to two alternate voting delegates. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Um, any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
Council discussion. Is there anyone that. Knows right now that they plan on attending that would be interested in being a delegate?
Anybody not attending. I'll, I'll be there, but I, I don't need to be the delegate by any means.
I, I would nominate, uh, Councilman Lorimer to be the delegate.
So we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
You wanna add two?
Do you wanna add alternates?
I, I would last.
Those that made the motion are, are alternates.
I would nominate, uh, Councilman Yao as the, uh, other alternate.
And then if, if you don't mind, can I amend your motion to add Councilmember Tassari as a second alternate? Mr. Donahue, please. Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tan Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Uh, item number ten, city manager report, city staff report.
Um, let's see, JC, JCSD's part.
I thought he started snoring. I thought it was maybe Tovar do- do- does not.
Italian Chiefs, Tovar's snoring back there. Wake him up. The chairs are too comfortable here. Uh, JCSD picnic in the park event starts this Friday, June twenty eighth, then goes through Sunday, June thirtieth. Uh, it's just a reminder, it's the only fireworks that should occur in the city of Eastville. All other firework usage will result in confiscation fines and could be even more severe. And we will be out in full force on July fourth, uh, with our community enhancement and safety team, as well as law enforcement and, uh. A number of individuals. So, uh, the eighth annual state of the city is this Thursday, July eighteenth at the Eleanor Roosevelt High School.
July eighteenth is not, not tomorrow.
Uh, is on Thursday, July eighteenth. Um. At Eleanor Roosevelt High School. I said this Thursday, July eighteenth, uh, um, so. It's a Thursday, July eighteenth. Um, Jesus. It's coming up like in three weeks, and if you wanna be a sponsor, we're looking for sponsorship. So pull out your checkbooks and help support the state of the city. Um, the next business success roundtable is Tuesday, July twenty third. At the Eastville City Hall. Um, the Public Safety Community Workshop is planned on Tuesday, July thirtieth. At the Eastville City Hall. Uh, also wanted to highlight that Hero's Restaurant is officially coming to Eastville. At the Hamner Place Project. Um, and I don't know why there's a humming on this. Um, but, uh, we are excited and we just met with the general manager, um, uh, um, on third. Um, Jeff Neely, um, who will be opening that, um, store or that restaurant. It's Hero's, uh, Restaurant and Brewery. Uh, um, and so, uh, they serve beer at like twenty seven point two degrees or something like that. It, it'll be ice, ice cold. Uh, um. And then last week, the planning commission approved Eastville's first hotel. Um, and in record time, it was taken to planning commission. Um, and, uh, when, when we talked about how long it usually takes to process hotels, uh, to get to planning commission, it's forty eight months. Forty eight months means, uh, time is money for developers. Um, it's also means time is money for us receiving our revenues of T O T. And so by getting that hotel process as quickly as possible, um, they can get their architectural designs in. And, and, and get sticks up in the air. So the Lewis's will be hoping, ho- hopefully be able to deliver the pad to them sometime in the fall. And hopefully twelve months from whenever they deliver the pad, we'll have a hotel grand opening. So that's a very exciting thing for the city of Eastville. It's a four and a half star with a rooftop bar, uh, a conference event center. As well as a, 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 a rooftop, a patio on that, uh, facility as well. A pool, cabanas, um, uh, it's a Staybridge Suites Extended Stay, ex- extended, uh. Uh, and it'll have a great view, uh, um, and it will all, it will be the only vegan option food. Uh, uh, hotel establishment in the Inland Empire. Um, so that is a great, uh, and. And local residents are the investors in, in bringing this to the city. So it's great to have residents in Eastville that are, um, wanting. Uh, to invest and make Eastville better. So we're very excited about that. Cafe Rio and Mod Pizza are both officially open at the Goodman Commerce Center. Uh, I know some of you have already partaken in the food. Uh, um, thanks to your social media, um, but, um, if you haven't been up to Cafe, uh, Rio and Mod Pizza, they're the corner restaurants. Uh, at, um, at Hamner and Cantu Galliano. Um, recruitment u- uh, updates. The executive recruitment has recently received over a one hundred applicants. It closes tomorrow, June twenty seventh. So if you would like to work with me and my management team, uh, that is a daunting task that you need to roll up your sleeves for. Uh, you can come be our executive assistant. We need your application and, um, um, it will be a very competitive process. We held interviews for the management analyst position today and hoping to get somebody on board soon. And the city has officially made an offer, uh, to an accounting manager and she will start July fifteenth. Um, and, uh, it before you, um, we per, uh, produce, uh, per year requests, uh, tracking a public records request. Since January of twenty nineteen, and just so you know, the first two or three months of the year was pretty, um, small. Uh, um, so, uh, um, the last two months has resulted in about eleven thousand dollars in, 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 in public records requests. Um, so just wanting to let council know, um, should you desire to budget. Uh, or provide additional resources or budget to address, um, public records requests. Because there is a state mandate, ten day response period, and we can ask for a fourteen day response period. Um, in some cases, some of the public records requests resulted in over forty five thousand emails being queued. Which we had to ask the public records requister, uh, to narrow their search, um, because, um, when we do emails. For, uh, um, personnel and HIPAA and, and, um, s- security and, um. Uh, personal information, um, uh, our city attorney as well as client pri- privileged information. Our city es- uh, attorney has to review all of those documents, uh, before they are released to the public. And so, uh, um, uh, so it can be very costly, uh, in the public records. And we wanna remind people that they can always just come in and talk with us. We're, we're open and transparent and, and accessible government. So. Um, other than that.
Brian, on this real quick, if we can keep an eye on this, just as it continues and if it continues to go up, if you can just. Bring it back to us, just to let us know, so that if we need to address it amid year review that we can.
Yes.
Um, I have a feeling it may continue to go up unfortunately.
And I think that is, uh, the conclusion of, um. We, we shared the Seraphina, uh, neighborhood already, um. Oh, last Thursday, we went to the Western Riverside Council of Governments, uh, General Assembly. Uh, both, uh, Councilmember Clint Lorimer, as well as Mayor Todd Rigby were there and our management team. Uh, um, and we got to hear, uh, a former press secretary, as well as America's Got Talent, uh, local superstar.
Cody Lee.
Cody Lee, and he rocked the house. Uh, uh, um, so, um, uh. Um, so everybody has their gifts and talent and Cody Lee is one talented individual. So, um, not a, not a dry eye in the house when he got up there and rocked it. So, uh, um. And we're very proud of him from the Inland Empire. So, um. And earlier in the day, at the, uh, uh, Future of the Cities Conference that was held. Prior to the, the, um, Western Riverside, uh, General Assembly, I was part of a pa- panel talking about housing. Uh, in, in the Inland Empire and is suburbia dying? Uh, um, and so, uh, the, the answer is no, it's not dying. Um, but we do. Uh, it's, it's like when, it's like when, uh, the Emmys start, uh, playing music when you should be done. Uh, um, uh, uh, um, not that, not that it was an Emmy award winning presentation, but, um, so that, that concludes our, our presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on to item number eleven, city council communications and committee reports, League of California Cities.
Um, yeah, I have an update on that front. Uh, the state board had its, uh. State Board meeting on Friday and Saturday. As part of that, I stood on the nomination committee. Uh, for the league, or I did this year anyway, the composition of that committee changes every year. Um, there were a lot of interested, uh, individuals interested in serving on the board, serving in leadership. Um, and it became, of course, as these sorts of things do, uh, it became extremely political. But we survived and, um, selected a great slate of individuals to serve in at large positions on the state board. This opportunity to do so comes up every, uh, once a year, so watch your emails. Uh, we're not gonna be having that again for at least another nine months, uh, notice, go out. Um, the second vice president position was also selected, um, and that is Cheryl Vegas Walker. Uh, she's out of Imperial County, and the reason I mention that is that that automatically enters into, uh, succession, succession. Uh, and that assuming she is reelected, um, and she will eventually become president of the league. Uh, of California cities. So that took place, um, on Friday and Saturday. And it was after our WR cog, um, event which took place Thursday night. Was over in, uh, uh, at this conference at seven thirty in the morning in committee going, interviewing candidates. So it was, it was awesome. Um, so that, and also for those who have not already done so. Uh, for the Riverside Division, we have our division meeting taking place in Temecula. On July eighth, and that being said, all, this is gonna be the first time that our division meeting is held in conjunction. With the division with San Diego and Orange County. And so it'll be, uh, we're, we had a. We had invited the, um, new, uh, base commander over at March Air Force Base. Who is the first female commander to, uh, be in charge of the base since its inception. Um, over, over a hundred years ago, and, um. She unfortunately has an event that same day, but we're working on getting her in the future. But we have another exciting speaker, hopefully, uh, we're in final, we're finalizing that right now. So. July eighth, if you haven't already done so, sign up. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the league, um, I participated. Last Friday, Friday before, forget when it was, on, um, league policy committee. Um, there's one action item that was taken. We voted in favor to approve or to, uh. Um, uh, we approved to support A B three forty four. Uh, just a quick bill summary, this bill would create the new beginnings California program within the Department of Community Services and Development, which would function as a grant program. The funding allocated through this program would provide cities and local continuum care facilities, the ability to implement or expand local programs. That connect homeless individuals with employment opportunities and services. Um, so that was. That was the main, uh, thing that we, we took care of there. There was also a speaker on child development. Um, programs, primary schools, um, and then also someone from the city of San Jose. Um, talked about how they were dealing with disaster preparedness. So that was the Community Services, uh, Policy Committee. And continuing on.
SCAG. No news since, uh, the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. WR cog? Just that, perfect. Uh, Riverside Transit Agency.
We have a meeting tomorrow and I'll send it up beyond the next council meet, well, the next following council meeting after that, so I will not be at the next council meeting.
W C E, we, uh, met last, before last meeting, we had an update then. Um, Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Uh, we will be, uh, spraying Friday night. So, did you already get the email?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're spraying?
Well, I do that in my backyard all the time. Get eaten alive out there.
When do they do that? That's like in the early morning hours, right?
Yeah, it's usually between like, uh, two AM and six AM.
Okay, so it would affect picnic in the park though? Okay. Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Yes, um, so, uh, since the last meeting, uh, they have a subcommittee meeting which took place. Um, that's called the Western Riverside County Programs and Projects Committee. That took place on, earlier this week. And I guess that would be, yeah, Monday. Um, and so a couple of items, one.
Um, and so a couple of items, one, we as a committee. And of course, this funnels up to the larger committee of uh rivers of the Transportation Commission itself, but on the western end. Um, looking out towards the future and the the closures that are gonna be taking place with the the sixty. They are upping the um the Freeway Service Patrol for towing. Uh which will be extremely important, cause it'll go down to one lane um at at times. And if a car breaks down in that, over in the Badlands area, that's gonna be problematic. So it hired some new, well, hiring to have the putting more money to have. The current tow truck operators focus on that area during that six month period. Also, um, one of the council members on the committee uh mentioned that there is going to be a closure. On um, I believe it was over the weekend, I'm trying to pull it up right now. Cahalko, they're gonna be closing down the the fifteen freeway down there, starting at nine. Uh, so Saturday, June twenty ninth, um, starting at seven P M to ten A M. We're gonna see a closure on a bridge, the the freeway itself. Uh, Saturday, June twenty ninth through Sunday, June thirtieth, nine P M to nine A M. So the north and southbound I fifteen uh from El Cerito to Wiric at Dos Lagos. So try to avoid that. Thank you.
I remember they talked about that main consolidation at my three hour meeting that I sat in for you. And I apprec- and I appreciate you prepping me for it, so tha- thank you, thank you. Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
We haven't had a meeting since our last city council meeting and we will not be having a meeting in July and in August as well. So the next meeting will be in September.
Thank you. J C S D?
We have not met.
Finance Committee?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank um actually uh Ernie and Aurelia for putting together the uh. They'll have it putting it by the next finance committee. Um, and that is the basically the second uh agenda item that's gonna be recurring, where it's basically gonna have. Uh, anything that wasn't approved by council, I think five thousand dollars and over, so that'll be created now for um for every finance committee. So I want to thank them and just kinda give a little more, make it a little easier for us and then also for the public to just kinda find some of those. You know, bigger dollar purchases that the city does make, that is not again not in the budget, not approved by council.
Thank you. And Council Communications, Councilmember Tassari. Councilmember Yao.
On June fifteenth, um I join, oh my gosh, I'm thinking that's been a long. Thomas and his family um for the Eastville Service Club, we clean up. Yeah, it's been a long night. Um, right outside the fire stations, no, it's not citrus. Chandler, yes, yes. Um, I collected over thirty pounds of trash. We thought it would be less this time. It 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 was, but it was still a lot of trash. Um, and then on on June twenty fourth, council member Tassari and I, we visited um. The Orange County's city civic center um that that is currently under construction. Um, and then also I attended the um R C C D found, so Riverside Community College District Foundation Annual Meeting. That evening as well, and Doctor Monica Green will be the new, will be will be the interim chair for Narco College. For those who don't know, Doctor Green, she used to be the vice president at Narco College and then she transferred elsewhere. And now she's back um as the interim president. She is part of the community, um. Not sure if she was born here, but she was definitely raised in the Inlet Empire, in the city of Corona, I believe. And she's very active in the community, involved in Sor- Soroptimist International um down in Corona. So she's a member of the community and um we'll see, we'll see what happens after this. And then also on June twenty fifth, great job on the Neighborhood Watch meeting, that was that was amazing. Um, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Laura Moore?
Uh Neighborhood Watch uh program or uh all all the all of them coming together was great. Um, also our. Eastville artist, uh we got to go check out um some of her art exhibit that she has in her home. That is going to be on display at John Wayne Airport uh starting soon. So you should guys should go check it out. I I asked if it was what side of security uh the pictures would be on and. The answer was on both, so you can go check it out there and um so book a flight and you can see them all. And um, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Plot.
Because as previously mentioned, I I won't be at the uh next uh city council meeting. Uh I'll be on a work retreat, but um but I'll be back the next following. Then yeah, I just wanna, I I don't mind, I kinda wanna bring up is we we had our um our our workshop last week. Uh for the sales tax initiative or or sorry, it was called uh, what's what's the proper title? Financial, yes, financial priorities. And it dawned on me, I I think when you start looking at going live on Facebook at our council meetings, I think it might be very beneficial for us. Something about it sees it seems it's the right thing to do. I think it'll help us a lot in. In in combating any misrepresentations. And I think going live might help quite a bit. And so just something to consider, something to think about, um but I think it kinda just dawned on me when it 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 was very interactive. I felt it was good, um and something maybe we can need need to consider. I think it'll help, it'll help us push the word out further and again to combat any type of misrepresentations or misleading dialogue. And and I think it might be a good thing, something to consider. That's all for us, was to kinda consider that.
If 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 that without doing something thing, i- if. There is a a majority of the council that would like me to look into that. Um, I can look into that and bring back a cost estimate of going, what it would take to go live. Um, um, in a professional way with videos and cameras and stuff like that. So i- if that is something that a majority of the council would like me to do without having a huge long debate, just let me know.
Sorry for throwing the curveball out there, but it just, it's been kinda eating at me.
I can hit curveballs.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can, but uh but it's something that's kinda been eating eating at me since then. And I think that might be a good good thing to do for us, for all of us and for the public.
I I don't I don't I don't think it'll accomplish the mission you're thinking of though, because you can't interact. They have to be here to fill out, you know, to to speak, so you can't take any questions. All it would be doing is people would be able to watch it.
Yeah, no, that that that's exactly it, yeah, exactly it.
I don't know that it's a go live, I think it's more of just a video streaming is what you're you're trying to get, right?
Yeah, I I know, yeah, but we could do live streaming.
Yeah.
That's what we could do and so that that would be one, yeah.
Just typically, it would be about a ten second delay, just in case we have to beep out anything you say.
It happens. But I again, I've just been thinking about, and you're right, you're right, councilor, sorry, uh you know, it might not, because you do, you can't have that interactive piece on there. But um it, you know, people do interact on there and 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 after the fact, you can always go back and kinda see people's comments. And maybe, you know, as if a councilor wants to, they can go maybe clarify some things with with the people that are interacting on those Facebook Live pages. But I think it it it's very helpful.
It most likely wouldn't be done through Facebook Live, it it it'd be just a video.
Just on the website.
Yeah.
But whatever the case I be, I think it would work out, I like it.
But since you brought that up, I I I did like that forum when you guys did that and everybody did a great job.
Well, thank you.
Henry did a good job of moderating.
So calm.
Yeah.
We all do, we all do.
Even I'm older.
Councilmember Laura Moore?
Uh, I well, just just a couple of thoughts on that, um. I think that we should look at the clock right now and uh we we should think to ourselves what that clock will look like. If and I I'm I may be even pointing it myself, but uh naming names. But if if we are on camera, what that will mean uh in terms of how long we're going to be here for. And and secondly, I I think something that would be instructive, even though it is um, they are different mediums. But the fact i- if you look at our the the amount of people that go to YouTube to watch our videos. Tiny, tiny, tiny numbers. And uh and granted, it is audio that is on the YouTube right now. Uh, but some something to think about. And more than this, what what I had always thought, and I I think that eventually we are going to get there. But what I always thought was that we would do, um. We would incorporate cameras, video, when we moved into our new uh city hall. Something, a permanent thing, so the tho- those are my thoughts, but I'm I'm open to um further discussion.
Is that something we wanna look into now, hold off on, or?
We we can always look into something that, just like a lot of our I T equipment here, will be transferable to a new I T room. Uh um a- a- and we can look into that too, so just we can, if you'd like me to bring something back, just so you can make a a council decision. We can look into it and do some exploratory work for you.
I don't mind, I think I think it would be a good idea and and I think there's no harm in, you know, taking a look at it and then bringing it back and. And we'll make a decision then.
I just wanna make sure that we're we're directing staff to do things that we're actually considering. I don't want them just to spin their wheels and.
Uh, I I am considering, yeah.
It it's not much work to cost it out, so we'll 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 have our I T guy consultant cost something out um and provide some.
Maybe just a rough quick.
We'll 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 and we'll provide some options to you.
Thank you.
Probably in September, since we have a big.
You can't do it next meeting?
No. We we will do it in Sep- the first meeting in September, we'll have something for you. Okay, uh we have a big thing called the State of the City coming up, and if I put anything more on my team right now, I won't be your city manager any longer.
No, that that's totally fine. Um, just real quick, two quick things. Uh, we had the opportunity, Councilmember Plot and I had the opportunity to um. Participate in the Marcus Williams Fundamentals Football Camp. It was a fun opportunity and the reason I bring that up is is because that is a great opportunity for youth in our community, as well as our region. Um, I know when I was a kid, when I saw a professional athlete, I was just like in awe. Um, so they had four or five N F L players that were there uh training these youths. So it's something that I think will continue to bring youth to Eastville. Um, to participate in this free event every year as it continues to grow. And and when we were talking to Marcus, Marcus was like, you know, it seems smaller this year, we wanted to continue to grow year after year. So he has um big hopes that it'll continue to grow, continue to be a successful program. Um, just the last thing was mentioned, yeah, we had the Neighborhood Watch meeting last night. I just wanted to thank everyone um that was able to be there, uh as well as our staff, as well as the Sheriff's Department, um the volunteer program for being there. Um, just everyone being there and supporting this program. It's uh been a successful program. And like we mentioned last night, the success is with our residents and everyone that supports it. So thank you for for everyone that participates and supports that program. Um, if there's nothing further, then we will adjourn this meeting. Next meeting will be on July tenth at six thirty P M and this meeting is now adjourned.